Okay, we will call the regular Hark meeting of September seventeenth to order at five thirty-two M at Rebecca Hall. As a reminder, the purpose of Hark is to preserve, maintain and enhance the historic character, scale, architectural integrity and cultural resources of the town and the Telluride Historic Landmark District. From Town Council, we have Eleanor, thanks for coming. Staff, we have Zoe, welcome, Darren, Kristen, Ally. And let's see if anybody's from staff online. Let's see anybody else. And from the board, it's Miss Chickens, go ahead.
Stacy Lake.
Mark Shambaugh.
Robert Mather.
Andrew Williamson.
Okay, first order of business is the election of the officers. Anybody want to speak?
I'd like to move to approve Mark Shambaugh for Chair, Stacy Lake for Vice Chair and Karen Lennon for Second Vice Chair.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
So Stacy yes, Mark yes?
Bob yes.
Andrew yes.
It's unanimous.
That was easy.
Could be the last vote for me. Approval of minutes, the regular Hark meeting minutes of eight twenty, who would like to?
I move to approve the Hark meeting minutes dated eight twenty twenty-five as written.
Before I second, I think there's, there's one typo. The motion for, let's see, which one was it, lot seven and eight, item number three, the vote was four to one. And the memo says four to, the vote was four to five. Other than that, I have none, I'll second the motion.
Okay, and we vote?
Stacy yes.
Mark yes.
Bob yes.
Andrew yes.
Okay. And the Hark Chair meeting minute with graciously Stacy took over in my absence. How were the minutes?
Uh, great. I would like to approve the minutes for the Hark Chair meeting.
Thank you Stacy.
And I vote yes.
It's, it's still unanimous. Staff announcements.
Sure, um, so a few things just to give you all a heads up, our certified local government annual report is due November third. We are working on preparing that in draft form as staff and we will provide it to you in the packet for the October Hark meeting for your review in advance and then we will discuss it during the Hark meeting, finalize it and have you approve it for sending in. And also there is a grant round that just opened for state level grants for funding that could support some of the projects that we've identified as priorities such as the update of the survey, et cetera. And so I plan to apply for, for funding for those priorities in this round and hopefully, yes. So, um, and then also I want to make a wonderful introduction. So, uh, we have hired a senior level consultant in historic preservation planning to support our historic preservation portion of our department. And I will introduce him now and then he actually reviewed his first project on behalf of Hark for this meeting and he will present that review as well to you tonight. But again, he's a consultant, he's a temporary consultant, working part-time for our department. So, um, bit of a little background so that you all. John Sutherd. Okay, um, so John Sutherd is the Historic Preservation Program Lead with Logan Simpson, that's the consulting firm he works for, a multidisciplinary consulting firm with offices in Colorado, Arizona, Nevada and Utah. John has worked in the cultural resource management field for sixteen years. He previously served as Chair of the Scottsdale Arizona Historic Preservation Commission, worked as the Historic Preservation Officer for Tempe, Arizona and sat on the Arizona Historic Sites Review Committee, which reviews nominations to the National Register of Historic Places and the Arizona Register of Historic Places. John meets the Secretary of the Interior's professional qualification standards as published in thirty-six CFR Part sixty-one for both history and architectural history. He'll be working for us on a project by project basis and we are thrilled to have him consulting for the town of Telluride. Um, and there's John, um, on the screen there.
Hello everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm very grateful to be working with Kristen and her staff and the commission. This is, uh, something that is very exciting and I, I look forward to working with you guys moving forward here.
Thank you.
But we can use your help and welcome and we'll look forward to your first project tonight. Hope you're not too nervous, you look like you're pretty experienced.
I appreciate it, yeah, just a bit.
Thing else?
Um, that's it for staff updates, thank you.
Okay. You want to do the process slide now or after public comments? Okay, just a reminder of everybody out there listening and or attending, um, the process slide is the one that, the steps that we follow for each item, the Hark Chair introduces the project. Staff gives a presentation and answers Hark's questions. The applicant then gives a presentation and answers Hark's questions and we ask for thirty minutes or less in the presentation. And the public is invited to make comments and then after, and we ask those comments to be three minutes or less, give everybody a chance to talk. If there's a line of redundant comments, uh, feel free to state your name and, and tell us that you agree with the previous comments. And certainly if you have other things to say, we welcome, uh, different comments. And then the applicant may make a rebuttal, a public comment ends and Hark does, uh, performs deliberation and votes. So that's the process, uh, tonight, is there any public comment on non-agenda items this evening? If you're out there, raise your hand electronically, if you have something for non-agenda items. Piper, I don't see anybody raise their hand. So we will proceed and, um, I'll read the intro of the public, first public hearing item. At two fourteen South Furts, an extension of a CA and the associated vested property rights. But it must be continued because we only have two eligible voters tonight, the other two are confused of the four commissioners present, it's a rarity, in fact, I don't even know if ten years I saw it. It happened tonight. Let history remember this day. Okay. So the second.
So is there going to be a formal motion to continue those items?
Oh, yeah, and, and, and Kristen, we're okay to go to October meeting, right?
Yes, absolutely.
What's the date for the October?
I believe it's the fifteenth.
Yeah.
We could just make sure we have a quorum for that because it's important for us to get this approved in October.
It looks like we will, I, I'm talking to other people.
Okay.
I mean, go ahead.
Okay. I move to continue to the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting project at two fourteen South Fur, Extension and Associated Vested Property Rights. As. Did you say anything else?
Second.
Can I vote on that?
Yes.
Excuse?
Oh, wait a minute, you're, uh, okay, I have to vote. Uh, I'll second that and I vote yes.
I vote yes.
And aren't we just unanimous every time? Okay. Thank you, sorry about that. Second project is at two thirty-four North Spruce, a small-scale new, new construction. Consideration application for small-scale new construction, residential zone does contain nine hundred and fifty square feet or more of floor area, but not more than two thousand five hundred square foot of floor area within the THLD per seven two oh three A one B one and a minor scale new construction in the residential zone district that will contain less than nine hundred and fifty square feet of floor area within the THLD per seven two oh three A one C one. Legal description as written here, it's lot sixty-seven point five, foot of lot fifteen and the rest as written. It's at two thirty-four Spruce Street. It's in the Historic Residential Zone District. The owner, Chris Carter, applicant Alpine Planning and staff member Kristen Kolder.
And this is the project that, um, John Sutherd will be consulting for and presenting on.
So John's going to do this one, okay, and so, yeah, welcome again, John, and again, it's your first time. The most important thing is to review, uh, the conditions, um, but we'll let you get started with a brief intro and look forward to it. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Here's your screen.
Yeah, I was going to say, allow me just one moment to share my screen here. Sir, I'm getting a an error message here, it looks as if I need to potentially restart. Uh, I, I apologize, I did not anticipate that.
That's okay.
Don't worry, John, if you have the ability to email me your slides, I could also show them for you, um, if, if a restart isn't required for that. But no worries at all.
Yeah, I'm wondering, uh, gosh, and, and I know this is not the best introduction to the commission, I apologize, but, uh, I'm wondering if I restart and then, uh, potentially.
That's worth trying, we've seen, we've seen that before, why not restart and try, if not, Kristen can do the slides and you can comment along.
Well, I was going to say if, uh, potentially you want to, to, uh, move to the next agenda item and then we could redo this. I don't know what works for the commission and the applicants, I do apologize here.
Normally because people come at the, the time that they want to listen to their hearing, we don't normally reverse the order. But if you want to restart and try that for two minutes and if not, Kristen could share the slides, John, and you could still talk through them.
I'll tell you what, give me just a moment here and I will restart, I, I really do apologize, this is quite embarrassing.
That's okay.
Let me, uh, let me close out here and restart it.
It's happened before.
Well, well, good, I suppose.
You're not the first.
I'll be back in, uh, just a couple of minutes here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your patience.
Shall we take a brief break?
Yeah. Yeah, we can call a four or five minute break here. They, you know, keep working on it and Jack, we're going to move ahead. To you.
We're going to do you.
They had technical difficulties on the last one.
Really?
For two, huh, Chris? Yeah. Okay. Let's, uh, the next, let's take on the.
If the client wants to be here for the presentation, we should, oh, check.
Limit, Jack's here representing.
Mark.
Is there somebody else?
Mark, before we get started on this one, the merits of the project, I do need to bring to your attention that we did receive a public challenge under the Ethics Code, Section two four eighty from Jack Wesson as to a potential conflict of interest on your behalf. And I'm going to allow Jack to present his, um, his position there and then I can provide additional information. And after that, this board will then get to vote as to whether you actually do or do not have a conflict of interest and that will determine whether or not you need to recuse.
Not aware of any, but great.
Evening. So, uh, this is Jack Wesson.
Well, I should introduce the project first maybe?
Okay.
And then, then Jack, you can, well, let's just, can we do it?
Let's, let's do the ethics hearing first and then we'll introduce the project when we know we're.
Please, Jack, go ahead.
Okay, just so, you know, I, I thought I'm like, oh, I had done work for you last year. We hadn't really finalized that. And I'm like, oh, the way I actually read the Ethics Code, it says, I can't give you things of value. We can have arms-length business transactions in both ways, right? But the work I did for you last year, not getting paid can be misconstrued as a bribe according to the two thousand two version of the Ethics Code. Now, there's a two thousand five version, I wasn't able to handle. That's the way, if you read the language specifically, that's the way it reads. So I, to be safe for my client, I don't want something to happen that the vote would get revoked but for, you know, because he didn't recuse himself.
Okay.
So if you say, you know, we're fine with this, with them voting, then that puts that issue behind them.
Okay, well, I'll share what we did and, and or didn't do and then I'll let the rest of the board just decide. I had Jack do some preliminary sketches for a twelve hundred square foot cabin up on the Mesa, which I never acted on, never built. Uh, we didn't pay anything, I told him that if, in the future, if I ever build it, I would come to him and then if we would engage in a contract, so I have no contract, but they were sketches, uh, off of a sketch I did, so that was, uh, probably a year and two months ago or something.
Yeah, it was last summer, because it'd be.
Yeah, it's over, it's over one year. Um, so I have no contract and I'm not sure if we're going forward, but I'll let the board decide. I, I don't, I don't have any bias one way or the other, but I'll let the board decide.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So at the moment, there is no contractual relationship between the two of them.
No, no, and the town attorney's office, we believe that the, I, I didn't know about that background, I did discuss this with Kevin. Um, we don't believe that Mark is an interested party for financial interest in this project. However, it sounds like the challenge is actually on whether or not there's been a bribe or a gift. But if the services were performed over a year ago, not in connection with this project, I'm not sure how that, um, could be construed now as having a conflict and being bribed. Um, but I will leave the discussion up to, up to you. It sounds to me like there's more of a payment dispute than, than an actual conflict here. Um, but, but again, I'm happy to, you're the, you're the ones that get to discuss this and vote on it.
They?
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, I have.
So, look, for clarification, is, is it a perceived payment dispute or is there actually a payment, a dispute?
Well, you know, I, I've sent him an invoice, but he broke his legs in traction for months. I just, I put it behind me and actually I had forgotten about it. Um, until just recently, I, it's hurting me. So, you know, I'm not, you know, it's not like I can lean Mark, I'm not going to chase him down. I, the agreement as it stands now, there's something that I'm not going to pursue, but I don't want to be, to be construed as a bribe, right? So, because nothing may happen, I mean, I did a bunch of work, I may not get paid for it. So that, I just want to put that out there so that, um, I'm upfront, I'm not trying to conceal it.
Good, well.
I will, I will say, I've had to disclose some, some things like this, I think, once or twice, once when I was perhaps on planning a zoning, it's been a while. I think the fact that this is now in the open air, for me, I, I don't have as much reservation, it's a year plus fourteen months ago. It's not ongoing, there never was actually a contract. I'm appreciative of it being, like I said, in the open, but I don't think I have any concern.
I'm not sure either, but I, I'm kind of leaning toward what you're saying.
Well, and you did hear this previously, did you not?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
What do you think?
I think I agree with Stacy and as long as we have legal counsel right here and they're leaving it up to us, everything is brought out, I mean, it's a personal opinion, but I think Mark will act in fair faith on what he decides to do for his job on this board and to move forward with the right decision. So I don't have a problem with it.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
So I move to keep Mark as part of the Hark Board for this particular project.
I'll second. Stacy yes?
Bob yes.
Andrew yes.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Okay, we'll begin four fifty-seven West Pacific Restoration. It's consideration application for small-scale addition of buildings that will increase the structure's floor area by more than twenty-five percent and result in a building that will contain more than one thousandth of a thousand. Inside the THLD per seven two oh three A one B three, small-scale repositioning of a designated THS primary structure inside the THLD per seven two oh three A three B four C is a minor scale alteration of a rated structure that does not increase the floor area inside the THLD per seven two oh three three C two. It's a minor scale repositioning of a THS, um, secondary structure inside the THLD per seven three four and an insubstantial scale insignificant alterations to a designated structure inside the THLD, including by way of example, but not by way of limitations, replacement of a nonhistoric windows and doors per seven two oh three A three D seven A. It's lot fifteen and the east half, lot sixteen, block five, West Telluride at four fifty-seven West Pacific in the accommodations one district. Owner is four fifty-seven West Pacific Avenue LLC. Applicant, Jack Wesson Architects and staff member Darren Candelaria.
Alrighty, thank you, Mark. So this is the consideration of a small-scale application at four fifty-seven West Pacific. This will look familiar, as this application was continued from the July sixteenth Hark meeting. Four fifty-seven West Pacific is located in the residential commercial treatment area in Accommodations One Zone District within the THLD. Four fifty-seven West Pacific is located on the north side of West Pacific Avenue on the block between Townsend and Aspen Streets. Currently on the lot, there is a rated contributing cross-gable, single-story historic wood frame structure. The structure has an older gable rear addition. There is also a rated contributing wood frame shed on the north end of the lot, adjacent to the alley. The project proposes restoring and rehabilitating the contributing primary structure and shed, raising both structures, new construction of an addition to the contributing primary, primary structure and alterations to the primary structure and shed. Previous conditions. Previous condition number one from the July Hark meeting was to provide a more detailed restoration and rehabilitation plan. Previous condition number eleven was to add specific statements to the rehabilitation plan. Staff find that both the conditions have been met with the existing conditions of the contributing structure and shed depicted alongside what is proposed, what is proposed with annotations on repair and demolition. These pages also included the required statements. Previous condition number two was to reduce the width and. Previous condition number two was to reduce the width and simplify the addition from the west, reduce the addition height and simplify roof form to be subordinate to the contributing primary structure. The height and width were reduced on the western end of the proposed addition. The western wall was moved east two feet, reducing the width. The height of the western end of the proposed addition was reduced five feet and seven inches. Additionally, the gable dormer was eliminated. There is now a three twelve shed roof. Another change was made to the southern wall plane. The wall plane was moved south nine inches, closer to the primary structure. Staff still has concerns with compatibility of the addition to the contributing structure. The proposed addition is taller than the historic structure and not substantially set back. Therefore, this condition has been retained. Previous condition number three was to reduce the amount of glazing on the north elevation and increase the verticality of the windows as well as eliminate the Oriole window on the southern facade. The window proportions on the north elevation were changed to one by two and glazing reduced. As well as the Oriole window on the southern facade was eliminated. This condition has been met. Previous condition number four was to retain the historic contributing shed intact rather than panelizing it for temporary removal. The applicant has stated in the narrative response to the condition that the historic shed will be moved intact as one instead of panelizing. This condition has been met.
You missed one.
Boop, thank you. Condition number six was to replace a large square window on the east elevation of the contributing shed with a smaller, more vertical window and eliminate the proposed window on the north facade. This condition has been met with the elimination of the window on the north facade and the proposal of a smaller, more vertical window on the east elevation, though this window still does not match the existing opening. Previous condition number five was to either eliminate the new door proposed on the west elevation of the primary contributing structure or move it further north. The door has been moved eleven feet and six inches to the north. Hark should discuss if this condition has been met. Previous condition number seven was to confirm roofing material on the primary contributing structure is Sanwood shingles. The proposed roofing material for the primary historic structure is cedar wood shingles. This condition has been met. Previous condition number eight was to provide a detailed landscape plan. This condition has been met with a landscape plan added on page A one dash O dot one two. Previous condition number nine was to screen new utilities on the contributing shed to minimize visual impact. Pontonia shrubs have been added to use as screening for the new utilities. Pontonia is not an evergreen. They are typically deciduous and drop their leaves in the winter. This would not function as screening year round. Therefore, this condition has been retained. Previous condition number ten was to show the previously proposed six-foot tall fence was transparent or revised to a five-foot tall fence with a transparent additional foot above. The fence has been revised to have the last foot be transparent metal mesh. This condition has been met. Staff recommendation. Though the applicant met seven of the eleven previous conditions, the proposed addition is not subordinate to the contributing primary structure and further revisions are necessary. As well as the new proposed, the proposed new and expanding openings in both the historic structures are inconsistent with the rehabilitation guidelines and should be eliminated or reduced. Therefore, staff recommend continuing this application. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good job, any questions? Very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant, Jack, go ahead and read your name again into the record and.
Okay, uh, Jack Wesson, Jack Wesson Architects. Um, I had just given the thumb drive and I'm not sure. Oh.
I have the application or the presentation.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll take me just.
Usually my left hand man will be here.
See if it'll load for.
So why she's, why she's teeing that up? Oh, here's Mark now. So you can get teed up, Mark, I'm not sure what that entails on your end, but. So what I, I wanted to start with is just to preface my presentation with something that really hasn't been discussed uh, in the narrative this time or by, or by staff, but I just want to reiterate in the, in the RC district, uh, it, you know, to quote, historically no more than twenty-five to forty percent site coverage existed there. So, I mean, I've done a lot of projects in that zone district and everybody isn't going to max them out because you, that's basically, there's no limit on, on floor area. This is probably the only project in that twenty-five to forty percent site coverage range. There's a lot of basement space, but, but visible. So, uh, the project next door to the, to the east, that one's, that one's, we're recently approved, that one's pretty good too. But it's only at about thirty-five percent site coverage, so it's, I just want to point that out. Now, obviously, the, the number, um, the number one issue here was, is, is the main issue. And as I, as we said, we reduced the width to, you know, I don't know, one foot eight and a half, an additional one foot eight and a half. That takes it under thirty foot, actually, in, in, in the guidelines, it said typical housing were between twenty and thirty feet. So we're, I guess that's been a minor adjustment, but it gets it within that range of the guidelines. Simplify the, he said simplify from the west, but I think it kind of meant simplify from the southwest because you can't really see the project from the west because there's a house right next to it, right? So there, that's where we will be tackled this, we're going to reduce the height of, of this addition or reduce the width of it. The total surface area of what was visible before and, and now is reduced by probably a third in that plane, I said twenty-eight percent in my narrative, but if, um, uh, so that's kind of a reduction and, and I tried to create that gap between this, the building. So what happens is you have the, the front courtyard is about sixteen feet wide and then you get about, well, halfway through the lot, more than halfway, then it next down to eighteen, but you still have that gap. You wanted to be able to see through the project and I think that's a pretty good sized gap uh, to be able to perceive that that is a gap.
Hey, Jack, while you've got that slide up, could I ask just two quick questions? One is, how many feet proud is that now of the contributing house to the west?
So that's a, that's a good point, I, I wasn't, haven't got to that yet, but I think.
Okay.
The how, the difference in the two planes is forty-two and a half feet roughly. So I went back and I looked at all the other projects that have been approved and that's actually in recent years, since I was on the board, that exceeds all the other setbacks between the primary facade and the additions facade. And then you can see here, I had a reduction of, of the height, the width. I went from about two hundred and fifty-four in this divan to a hundred and sixty-one. So that's, it's really more than a third of the area um, that we're trying to reduce. And we brought the eve down, that's really visible, um, I think three and a half feet from where it was. The actual roof eve, uh, from the top of the gable, that's more like over seven foot drop. And as we get into this more, you'll see, um, you'll see when I'm talking about that, the roof plane is in line with the person standing on the sidewalk. So really what you see is just the eve, you don't really see the roof and as you would perceive it in reality, right? So that the, the, the total drop of the roof is, is significant, but if you go from the ridge to where the new eve is, it's really a dramatic drop of, of how much that would come down. Now, the plane of that addition is roughly where it is before. I got rid of the pop out, but I moved the wall forward, so I split the difference between the two. So effectively, it's pushed back nine feet, but the large plane is pushed forward essentially not, I'm sorry, nine inches and the other planes, nine inches forward. But I think what's more important is that, you know, it's already fifty-eight feet, fifty-seven feet back from the sideline. You'll, you'll see it in the middle.
The addition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's back and it's, like I said, the difference between the two facades is what the code speaks to. I'm a little off, off tilt here, but, um, my notes here, you know, the, as, for example, um, before, the setback from the primary facade is how it's written in the code. That's, that's the key, not necessarily from the street. But what's unique here is that this facade is, um, much closer to the street. So if we can go maybe to the next slide, why don't we go to and we'll come back to this one? Okay, so here, I think what I want to point out is the scale of the front facade of the historic structure relative to the scale of the addition behind it. If you can see, let me get out of my seat. Now, this doesn't even do justice because you would really be perceived in the elevation coming all the way up. That big. This is the addition right here.
Use it, man.
Can we zoom in on that? Yeah.
So the perception of the two, the one is miniscule compared to the other and it's, it's not only a function of the distance apart between the two, but it's the proximity of the front facade to you when you look at it. And that's what makes the, it's obviously subordinate when you have, you know, something here that's two or three times the size of something that's four times farther away.
So maybe this slide's better, I just wanted to ask the question again on, from the other side. How many feet proud is that, um, addition to the west off of the contributing structures? West wall.
How far does it stick out to the side?
Yes.
I've, I've my confidence on the ground, but I don't.
And, and I thought I read you reduced it two feet, but did?
Yeah, it was about one foot nine inches, if I'm not mistaken.
My question is, how proud is it?
You go back to the elevation, that would help.
Um, yeah, how far is it? How far is it, the tree, for example?
The drawing.
Right there.
Or some of that for plan.
Do the one from the front.
I don't have the dimension on that one.
Yeah.
Why don't you just tell me what it is?
Yeah.
I'm looking for this dimension, I think. How far it sticks up. So why don't we, um, are you in control or the, no? Can you, can you zoom, um, out, I guess I'm trying to say?
Eight foot four.
So, so as I, like, I look at the last project that's similar to this and I'm like, alright, what? I think this is two eighteen north fur, you know, I voted for it, Karen and, and you. And I think it was a successful project, maybe Matt or Stacy worked on it. This one has, for example, the setback of the, of the addition from the front property line is almost identical. It's within like a twelve inches, right? The actual setback from the house to the addition is thirty, thirty-six feet. Alright, so it's, it's six foot closer. Um, the difference is, is that maybe you can zoom in to the lower left of the two photos.
Lower left? Down there or these?
The photo.
Photos, yeah.
So, like I said, this one, I tried to actually match, I have about ten square feet of surface area less beyond, beyond this project. This one's got like a hundred and seventy, we're, we're within, call them the same, basically. So as you, as you get up close, you can see, alright, that's, to me, I think that's subordinate. What you see, the house in the front and what's at the side. Now, what's a little bit different on this house is, is that you can get to the side of it a little bit easier. You can see down the side of the building, um, a little bit more. So here, I can get past the, the edge of the property line and I can see, and I can see the house. Now, nonetheless, I think it's, I think they're successful. Um, here, along with our design, you can't get in a position where you actually can see the connector, right? So there's, there's a sense of, that there's some separation. It's difficult to look down a building and know how much that is, whether it's ten feet or five feet, right? Uh, but you can tell that there's, there's some separation.
That's eight foot, eight foot four, is that what I heard, it's standing proud, that dimension?
Is that what you?
Yeah. Eight foot four, thank you, that's all I asked.
Okay. So, um, and you can scroll up, uh, and you can see kind of a comparison of, I'm just looking at the right side of that. And then if you scroll over to, to my side, then there's another calculation. So they're roughly, they're roughly the same. I'm not, I wouldn't be counting the stuff above the roof on either of them because you, you can't see it. Um, what I like to do is go to the next, um, slide. Now, I think we zoomed down the bottom two, I'd like to zoom in on the top two. So I'd start with the one on the, on the left. Now, the upper left. Perfect. So this is if you're standing across the street on the sidewalk on the other side. And you can see that, you know, the eve of the building, as you see it, it's, you know, it's quite a bit lower than the primary facade, so it's definitely recessive. Now, you can, I did it so you can just see the corner of the higher roof, but you can see that is still substantially below the, the, uh, cross gable of the primary house. Now, another thing that's interesting is that when you, when you kind of walk down the street and this, this house is in the guidelines twice, as a photograph in the guidelines. And, um, why don't we go to the, the next one?
The first one?
Oh, actually, that's kind of what it looks like now. And then we've kind of placed the model in there. So that's just the before, after. Um, but you can scroll down now.
Next slide.
Yeah. But here again, um, maybe we, we try to zoom in on the upper left. Now, this is if I, if you're, you're going to be quite a bit distant from the project. This is what you'd see if the tree were cut down, right? There's kind of a big tree that cuts through that intersection, so, um, if you scroll to the right photograph and see, you know, kind of what happens there. Now, what's also kind of makes this possessive is this the orientation and the sun angles. So because the house to the west is so huge, the back of this is almost always in shade and shadow. So it's just inherently, because the front of the buildings on the south is going to be sunny, you're going to, that's part of what you're proceeding here, it's actually hard to see that recessive thing in the shadow along with just how you, how you paint it, for example. And then let's go to the, uh, let's scroll down, see what this is. Alright, so let's, this is if you stood in the middle of the gap on the sidewalk and then if you go to the left. Now, we're, we're actually a bit tall here, but this is really close. So you can see if you're, you know, have the best possible viewpoint of it, that's basically how much of it you can see. You can see a little bit of the other, the upper part. And it's, it's very difficult to see though, and you can see more of it if you're just in the right spot. But as you, as you walk down the sidewalk, I guess what I wanted to do is scroll over the last little bit here. Definitely the last page. Second to last page, sorry. So what I'm trying to do in this kind of sequence is, when you're walking down the street from the east going westbound, you're not really going to see this addition because you're going to walk, you'll have walked past the house and it's only, you know, it's at a ninety degree angle, but you stop and look. It's if you're walking eastbound from the west, then this is what you have the opportunity to see of the addition. So you don't really see it as you get close to the house. And then you get right up to the, near the property line and the tree is right there. So you really don't have the opportunity to look down and see the addition until you're literally in front of the line. So in terms of being inconspicuous, I think it's, it really fits the um, what the code says is, is, you know, it doesn't want to be invisible. Or it doesn't want to, it doesn't have to be hidden, it needs to be inconspicuous, the, the guidelines. Um, and also here you can see that when you look down this opening, you can see all the way through. And that's usually on sunlight down there, so it's a nice contrast. So you, you have a decent sized gap between the buildings. In part because it necks down, so it's, it's very wide at the beginning. Um, and it is, it's, most of the separations are closer to probably sixty or seventy. So this one's a little bit wider. So that's uh, that pretty much covers what I wanted to regarding regarding these slides. There's a, a couple more things that number one touches on. This kind of dealt with RE nine, B one, three, four, C one and C, uh, C four. RC twenty-two had something to do with, you know, reducing the width less than thirty feet. At the intro bit. Now, A one has to do with stepping the building down to the property edge or increase the setback. And so I have tried to step the roof forms down on that side and I've increased the setback. So I've kind of done both, both those uh, options. A four has to do with the, the rear structure. I don't have any images here of the rear of the structure, but if you, you can just go to a side elevation. Yeah, I guess the best one is there A two, oh three and oh four show the side elevations. So the idea on the alley is to, you know, step down to the alley here. And so what I'm trying to do, for example, if I look at the, the west elevation, you, you, you have elements that get lower. First of all, we have the front stilly shed. And then the actual building itself is set thirty feet back from the alley. And the grade is running up, but I'm not lifting the floor level of the real addition. In fact, I lowered the floor level of the upper floor to make it lower. That was one of the ones we did. So I had to, you know, I guess what I'm saying is where the deck is, the height of the building is really maybe just over one story. And then it's like one and two thirds, two thirds stories, because it's a third berry into the, into the grade. So the grade is coming up three feet on the back of the building. So a combination of, you know, having the deck at the lower eve, the setback as far as we do, and then having that smaller one story element, that provides kind of a stepping on the rear, the rear of the building. RE seven, now, the way I read that in the code, I think our, it was written as RC seven, A one, but as I read that, that's just has to do with Oak Street. I have this, I suspect it might be a scrubner that it was RC seven. So that has to do with uh, additions to the roof of a structure. And the way I read it is we're not actually doing any additions to the historic roof. We're trying to leave the exact form that it is that he was, that you can see. The little um, the later addition on the side, like I said, we're raising a little bit. No one can see that, but we at least it gives us standing height on the inside. Where we do attach to the buildings on the back wall. So as I'm reading the code, it's really referring to if you're adding dormers, or maybe you're adding skylights, or a form that impacts the roof. I don't think we're impacting it at all. And if you want to read into it that, well, does the addition have a simple roof? And I've tried to, to make the addition have you know, the simplest roof as a shed roof. Now, you can see from here too, is that from the street, when you look at the addition, you just see the E, you don't actually see the roof from the sidewalk. So like I said, that, the part you see, I've tried to make utterly as simple as I can. And then the other part, we debated, you know, I met with staff, I met with Dan, I met, I met with Kristen. And we were debating designs, it was really with Kristen, we got into the design debate. But we were, you know, do we do a shed in the back and another shed with a clear story? So we evaluated all these options and like, you know, it's much better from the back if I do the roof form that I have. Albeit, I can see a little corner of it from the front. I think the trade-off was that this is overall the best in terms of the scale on the back and what, how much of it you'll see from the front, because it's miniscule. I don't mean to speak the question. But that's, that's what I took from our meeting. So like I said, I think that's RE seven and not RC seven. Um, and that, yeah, like I said, that's how I'm interpreting what that should be. Now, in your booklet, do you have an elevation of the shed? And that once again, we have photographs, kind of. Right, so you have a kind of a photograph of what it looks existing and what we're proposing. So on A two oh point four is the east elevation of the shed that has the, the window in question. And if you look at the bottom image of the shed as a photograph of what it looks now, you see kind of a big plywood panel. At the top of that panel, I just want out there to verify, it comes up to about my, bridge of my nose. So, and I looked at it, but it's, it's, there's bucks around the opening. It was the original shape. Um, I couldn't get into the shed this time. It, it's just a very odd height for a window. I mean, for me with, like I said, it would, it would come up to the middle of my head. Most people couldn't, you know, wouldn't be looking out so much. So I took the liberty of just making it a functional window and, and raising the header height to the other, you know, the other fenestration on, on there. It's a funny shape too. It's not, it's horizontally oriented, it's not vertically oriented as an opening. So that was one reason why I broke it in two pieces, is to help create a vertical orientation, but also making it taller helped create that vertical orientation. Now, the other issues that we had that were minor, um, if you could go to A two oh three and you can see the door on the side of the building that we added. And I had argued that it's really, and it's important functionally for that building. And it's, I think it's pushed back far enough that you can see it in the image on the upper um, left, that it's, you're just looking at it on edge, so to speak. So you don't really get a great look at it for starters, but it's a really minimal request to add, I think, in terms of all the, all the things going on in the building. We really tried to keep it intact. That's the only, the only thing that we added. There are some windows that had funny shapes that have been, cut through a couple of times that we changed, but this is the only thing that we've added on the historic structure. The last issue had to do with the gas meter. Now, you know, I, I feel trapped on this, because I know that the gas company is going to tell it the way it is. I, I can add, you know, shrubbery on either side of it. Um, I could add a juniper instead of a pottella so that it stays green year round, if that would make a difference. Um, but I don't feel I can enclose it. I had tried to disguise it with creeper vine, but staff requested that I don't actually use vines on the historic building as a means of camouflage. So I, I peeled that off. It's the only other trick I had on my sleeve.
Jack, can you use a rusted metal screen door that opens for access, but for them to read the meter?
Do it for an electric meter. I can't conceal the gas.
Well, it's not concealed. It's, it's screening. But rather than plants, I, I've, I've seen this before around where there's rusted look.
If you want to, yeah, if, if I'm allowed to put a metal screen in front of that, I can do that. If I'm allowed. I, I didn't think I would be allowed. Stacy, maybe you have any insight on that. When I thought of that, I've been, things have been dictated to me largely by the gas company, to be honest.
Okay, anything else?
I think I've covered everything, that's all.
Questions?
Yep, one question. You said that uh, the western facing wall protruded eight point four feet. How much further out is that balcony? That comes off the side of the building on the west side?
Eighteen inches?
Eighteen inches? How close is that to the setback?
Give you, I, I better give you a precise number, because everything's two six and change.
From the setback?
From the property.
From the property. So the porch balcony is technically in the setback then?
Yeah, and if it's a one hour, it's somewhere that's
Were, were you trying to use that to step down to the side, or is it structural reason?
Does that, it does that in part, and the other is just to have a deck big enough to have a hot tub and be able to get around it. It's not a huge deck.
Yeah, the reason why I was asking is because at, at least in the description, it looked like the hot tub fit on there without that extension. I was just trying to figure out what protruding beyond that.
That, that's a fair statement. I guess what we're thinking of is, is um, is being able to access it, have a place for the cover. So that's always, you know, I always leave two sides open for, to deal with the cover. Now, the other thing is, is that the spacing of the tub, and if that requires a glass railer. So as I get the rail closer to the hot tub, I need more glass, but that's the only thing I've got.
Thank you.
Other questions? Just have one last question. The previous meeting, we had a question on the land use code on site coverage. And it appeared with the connector, which was supposed to count with the principal, but it was over forty-five percent, which is the cap. Does this forty-three point three percent or the eighteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet, Jack, that you show on this table, what Sam does? Uh, does that include that connector? Square footage?
I can't have a diagram on sheet, so I'm going to make sure we're
But my question is, does that eighteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet include the underground connector, which is by definition?
The connector itself, yeah. It connects, it includes the connector.
The square foot?
The little strip south of it. The only thing that not included in the big house is the stuff that's on the side of the of the side of the historic house. And so I, I went over this with staff to determine, you know, where's the cutoff line from what goes to the house and what goes to the, uh, what goes to the, um, the shed. Now that said, uh, I didn't count the shed underground at fifty percent. I counted that at a hundred percent side effect, just to be grounds.
Okay, so the entire connector is included in the eighteen hundred and twenty-eight square foot on the principal structure?
That's correct, and I, I
I don't know how that happened, if you only took one foot nine out of the width, but I didn't, I didn't.
Well, I reconfigured the connector too.
Oh, okay.
Or the
Got narrow.
And the addition, so that
Okay.
Was, was the one shaking?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, uh, let's hear from the public. If you'd like to come up, give your name and/or if you're online joining us. Go ahead, first person, come up, read your name for the record and we ask you to be three minutes or less, please.
Hi, my name's Kristen Parmakoff. I would just like to commend Jack on his design of this historic structure. I live in the west end of town. I walk path, I walk down this road every single day. And there's some monstrosities on that road that's destroying the character of our town. So I really appreciate what he's doing to make it a smaller scale, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Electronically, if you're out there, would you like to raise your hand and comment on this project? If not, we'll proceed. And Jack, any rebuttal to the compliment? Okay, uh, sorry to put you in an awkward position. So we'll, we'll begin our, thank you, we'll begin our deliberations. And the, I mean, Darren did a good job. The question is on number one. Really? Well, and I mean, you talked about the door, was it okay? But, so what's the board's feeling? It protrudes out eight point four foot from the west side of the contributing house. Again, a contributing house where we're very sensitive. Um, and Jack's point was it's fifty-eight feet back from the street. But as Andrew reminded us, then the balcony protrudes another two and a half feet, it actually in the setback. So we'll go around the table. Uh, Andrew, why don't we start this then? How, how do you feel about number one and Darren's recommendation to further reduce the width and uh, the height of the addition and simplify the roof?
Well, I mean, at least as far as the guidelines say that uh, now it's supposed to have a deck or balcony in the setback. So that's one thing. I mean, I can get it, they want to have a hot tub, but if it could fit on that porch without having to protrude out of that extension, I think that would go a long way. Does this, does that suffice enough for a contributing structure to protrude out that far? So I know that's the conversation we've had on some of these other.
Well, it, we've had some that have protruded out beyond the facade of the actual contributing house.
Right.
Normally, like decks, we want them to be lined up behind the contributing, not protrude out for, like decks, to the left and right, excuse me. It's eight foot four, that's what we're going to have to decide here. I'm going to let the board comment first and then I'll, I'll jump in. But anyway, your point about the balcony, what, what'd you say about the height?
The overall
He lowered it five foot sevens.
Uh, I, I'm not bothered by the height of it. I was looking when he was discussing that he thought it was uh, RC seven, or that's what we have in here, RC. And I went back and looked at the RE seven. And that seems to be more appropriate.
It, it is, alright.
Yeah, okay. That seems to be more of them.
Alright, well, thank you. Anything else? Oh, uh, while, while you're on it, uh, was the movement of that door eleven foot back further? Taking it out of sight, is that, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Alright.
And then, for the uh, the gas meter, I, I mean, I've seen it all across the block where I live, where they're all shielded with some sort of landscaping with shrubbery. And I get where he's coming from of what the gas company dictates. So I mean, I could be okay if it's, you know, concealed a little bit by some sort of landscaping.
Not perennial, what is it, the word? Doesn't, it doesn't shed its leaves, it's green all the time.
Ever, evergreen.
I agree. I think the uh, the deck protruding I agree. I think the uh, the deck protruding. Should be uh, reduced. Um. I'm okay with the main part of the addition in the back being uh, and I walk the street every day too. And I don't think you're gonna see much of the of the main part of the addition from the street. But the piece that sticks out the side, um, if that could be. A little bit smaller. Maybe, I'm not supposed to design, but what if it was a shed roof that was east to west? As an idea. So that it'd be very short, much shorter on the side next to the other house.
Like mimicking the front cable a little bit, but off to the side.
Yeah, just to be, yeah, just a shed that's like that. As an idea. To look at. Um. I agree about the windows, the gas meter. Yes, we can shrub stuff. And I don't have a problem with its side door back that far. I think. We could probably walk around town and find quite a few that that do have a secondary entrance on the side. So.
Thank.
I think we're. Pretty much in agreement so far.
Stacy?
Um, so I will tell you, I did go back and I read our condition from July related. It was number three in the July motion. It it's basically repurposed here as one. The wording is very similar. It's not exactly quite word for word, but it's very similar. When I went through and and looked. I had both packets up oh, up at the same time. And I was very pleased. With the reduction uh, that Jack made. On the west side. Of the addition, both by bringing it in from the west property line and bringing it down, limiting the dormer. I, like I said, I I felt like he met our condition. Whole cloth. Um, so the the fact that we're discussing it further, I was, I wa- I wasn't gonna. Go there. I thought he did exactly what we asked him, or at least what I thought we asked him to do from my point of view. Um. I do agree now with the discussion about the deck extending beyond the corner, past the corner. We typically consistently have have tried to stay away from that. Um, especially on the side where it's visible, projecting beyond. Um, so I I would like to see that. Deck on the west side pulled back at least to the corner. Um, I think it's, I'm okay with it projecting beyond on the north. Because you don't see that projection from the alley.
So go out.
Yeah.
For the gap.
Um, gas meters are gas meters and they're getting harder and harder to deal with. The gas company is coming up with new restrictions monthly. Um, I I would, I guess, like to see. An evergreen. Um, type of that, but but in terms of enclosing it. Uh, you know, we could have him add a screen or something else in front of it, but now we're adding mass. I think these gas meters are. They're sort of visual noise that we all tend to look. Hopefully passed and it and they are what they are. Um. The door. Is functional and and I I think probably fairly necessary, and I appreciate that he moved it back as far as he did. So for me, you know, I could. I mean, I could pretty nearly. Approve this with, we press one, one additional condition regarding the deck projection on the west. But I could strike four, I could strike three. And I could strike one or two.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Uh, I'll weigh in. Um. Thinking back over a lot of projects, trying to be consistent, I. Uh, first of all, I appreciate the changes made. I'm good with the door. That might have been the one that. Suggested moving it back, but. But thanks for doing that. Uh, I agree with Darren on number. Two, we didn't really discuss that. And then Jack showed how difficult that was. Yes, I should ask. What are we gonna do with that? And then I'll comment on number one. I'm okay with an evergreen. Screen, um, not deciduous. But but what do we got? The size of the window on that shed?
I think you could reduce it a bit. It is, seems pretty large when you've got the other one that's even bigger next to it. I don't think that's a big deal.
Yeah, you with that, Andrew? Stacy, sure, okay. So on number one. I agree that his reduction of the height, five foot seven, was probably enough. To. Suffice with the guidelines. I also agree, we should not let that balcony intrude in the setback. But. I also believe eight foot four proud. Is still wider than I would imagine that we might have approved before. Um. You know, like.
Per proportion. We know what the width, the.
Well, no, in the, in in, according to the subordinate, um. Uh, to, so that you don't see as much of it. And again, he showed that how it was back in a narrow yard. I mean, we all saw that photo. I get that. But to me. You know, sticking out four or five foot proud would be one thing, but eight foot, I just feel the guidelines uh, would call, it it doesn't fall in my mind about being supportive. It sticks. Again, it was a supporting house or just a regular house.
But it's contributing.
It's cool. Yeah, I can't get away from that and. And I, so I'd have to agree with Darren on that. It's just a matter of.
And the fact that it's fifty seven feet back from the primary facade is.
Helpful.
It is.
From the facade or from.
Is that from the property line or the?
It's forty two and a half from facade and fifty eight, seven and a half.
Fifty eight from the property. So, so what I rationalized in in thinking of past interpretations is that. You know. Just like the decks, we don't normally want those to go beyond the sides of a contributing house. And I think the word subordinate to me. Means you're not going out eight foot four, but then you've got this fifty eight feet back. So it mitigates it, but I don't know how much. I guess I just spoke to say. I'd probably be all right with, you know. Certainly would be all right with four foot proud, um, and the balcony.
What was it previously?
Well, he he reduced it one foot nine, let's say two feet. So it was ten foot.
Yeah.
Four, now it's.
Which is basically where almost, almost where the balcony is.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the balcony needs to come off no matter what, but I I I would, unlike Stacy, I would say that. You know, it should stick out at the most, be allowed to stick out four to five feet and still be called subordinate, even if it's fifty eight feet back. We've had some that are seventy feet back. And they weren't eight feet. Proud. Of a contributing, whole contributing house. So. That's just my belief on my interpretation guidelines. I agree with Darren. Um, but I do.
I.
Disagree that the height has not been met. And so that's it.
And and I I do hear you. In this situation, though, there's a shed, it's a historic shed that's oriented north, south. In a north, south orientation, there's not as much space, available space. To elongate and narrow. You're already following me?
On the shed?
On the addition.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Because of this shed.
He's gonna lose square footage. I get that.
Well, I understand, but it's in this middle of the lot. Again. Really far back. In the street. I'm, for me, that's enough. I'm just.
Okay.
That that that. Not not supposed to worry about the inside, but that's a, that whole element is a stairway. I think could be reconfigured and could possibly reduce it.
Yeah.
Like you're saying.
I I I have to agree with Darren. So I don't know.
Mean on everything?
No, 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 on on number one, on on the uh, width, I I just, I think the height is a met. I'm okay with the reform. Unless you guys see something different and and I'm okay with. Reducing size of the window and evergreen. Screen with an evergreen, but that's something deciduous and and he did what he needed to do on the door. So. It's just how much protrusion we're allowed and then, you know, getting rid of this balcony into the setback. So. I think we all agree the balcony can't be in the setback. But the question is, Stacy says it's enough, eight foot four sticking out because it's so far back. I say. Maybe I could see four. Feet or so proud, but I I can't see eight feet, I think, but. You two decide.
I think it's, I think reducing it. Certainly would help even more. I don't know if four feet.
Yeah, I don't, I I think I'm okay with reducing it, but I think four feet might be a stretch. I mean, that that compromises a lot of what they're trying to do. Continuing wise. On that whole side and it mess, then you gotta replace it somewhere else.
Well, I I unfortunately, I I'm not looking at the program square footage. I'm just looking at the word subordinate and and.
Sure.
But but it could almost be approved if we decided straw poll on the footage. I think this could be approved. We wouldn't even have to. Bottleneck this thing again. But.
Two feet?
I I'm I'm gonna go with what you and Andrew decide.
Two feet? I would be okay with that.
Two feet?
We reduced it by not additional two feet.
And 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 get rid of the, get rid of the balcony.
Balcony goes.
Yeah, I I I can vote for that.
Okay. We're gonna have to figure out which of these don't apply anymore then. We've got a million of them.
Well, I think we just re redo number one to say width only, and then you can still use these guidelines. That are certainly nineteen B one, B three, B four, C one, I've read them all and C four.
Okay.
Uh, you don't have to do the RCs, but and then and then and the same thing and 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 elimination of that. Um. Uh, balcony protrusion.
Yeah, that's RC seventeen D.
RC seventeen D?
Yeah.
And you know what, Andrew? You know what's coming?
How do we want to say this, though?
I I, well, what about for the deck, revised deck on western facade not to protrude beyond the wall?
That's fine, RC seventeen D.
So I'll make that a new one?
Yeah, let's just handle it separately. And then the first one, just is very simple, reduce the width.
Reduce the width. Of the.
Two additional feet on the west, on that west side.
And additional.
And we we leave number two, well, number. We add. Another one, one, two, and then two will be three and. And three will be four, I guess, or you can just add that, you can add the elimination of the. Uh, balcony protrusion as a number four, if you want to keep it simple.
Yeah.
But would one of you like to? One of you two like to make a motion?
Now you're saying four again?
Four could be the reduc- re, elimination of the balcony protruding.
Okay.
That's facade into the, for our C seventeen D.
For. RC seventeen D, you said?
Correct.
And so the first one would say reduce the width. Uh. Of the addition.
On the western side.
On the western side.
Minimum of two feet.
All right, let me. I've got this all over. It's a mess again. Addition from the west side and additional two feet. Okay, that goes there. Eliminate, reduce the addition height and simplify the roof form.
Yeah, just read a new number one, I think.
And then just sit and so the addition is subordinate and that could stay. The rest of that could stay. Right?
Yep.
Okay, so I move to approve. I'm just getting this here so I can see what I'm doing.
Shall I try it?
Does does the autumn of one, do we need to change RC to RE?
Oh, yeah, we should. That's an E.
Okay, I'll read that whole thing. All right, I'm gonna try this.
Yeah.
You ready? I move to approve. The small scale application at five fifty seven West Pacific Avenue.
Forty seven.
Four, excuse me, four fifty seven. West Pacific Avenue, based on the staff memo dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. With the following conditions. Revised number one to say. Reduce the width of the addition. From the west, an additional two feet. Delete. Reduce the addition height and simplify the roof form. Delete all that so that the addition is subordinate to the contributing primary structure consistent with RE nineteen B one. B three, B four, C one, C four. RC number twenty two, intro A one and A four. RC number twenty two. I guess that's a one. Or I. And RC number seven, intro A one.
B little bar, RE.
Did I say RE?
You said RC.
Oh, that's. I wrote it on top of, I couldn't see it. Okay, RE. Uh. Number two is written. Number three is written. Um. Now, a new number four. Uh, eliminate the balcony uh, projection on the west side. Of the addition per RC seventeen D. This motion is based on evidence testimony provided at public hearing held on September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Notice such hearings provided. Hearing provided as required by Telluride Land Use Code. Revised plans incorporating conditions of approval shall be submitted within sixty days of this approval. Or this approval becomes null and void unless otherwise indicated. The revised drawings submitted for a certificate of probabliness must be a complete set. Any changes to the drawings collated and labeled. Any changes to the drawings beyond conditions of approval. There resulted more than one submittal being required.
Okay.
One second.
Thank you. How do you vote?
DCS.
Marcus.
Fabius.
Andrew, yes.
Approved. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. The next.
Are they ready and?
Uh, do we go back?
Yes.
John?
He is fun and good.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and introduce it. And. So the next project is two thirty four North through small scale new construction. It's consideration on the application for small scale new construction in residential zone district. Will contain nine hundred and fifty square foot or more of floor, but not more than two thousand five hundred square foot floor. Within the THLD per two oh three A one B one and a minor scale new construction in a residential zone. Tain less than nine hundred and fifty square feet of floor within the THLD per seven two oh three A one C one. Legal description as written, starting with the six, west sixty seven point. Five feet of lot eighteen, block thirty two. It's at the address at two thirty two North Spruce. Zone district is historic residential owner Christopher Carter. Applicant Alpine Planning and staff member um, will be our consultant, John Southard. Welcome back, John.
Well, thank you very much and to the commission and staff and the applicant. I do apologize. That was very embarrassing. So I'm sorry for uh. The delay and interrupting the cadence of the meeting. I will share my screen now. And we will get started on this. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, so as mentioned, this is a uh, small scale review for two thirty four North Spruce Street. Uh, an application to build a new. Primary residence and a uh, secondary structure. This is within the Telluride Historic Landmark District. Property is currently a vacant lot. There was previously a home on the property, however, that was damaged in a fire in June of two thousand twelve. And subsequently demolished. Uh. Being within the district, there are uh. Historic. Buildings and structures nearby to include. Uh, the eighteen ninety five Wonderlook House to the immediate south, so the orange rectangle. Indicates the subject property. The Wonderlook House is to the immediate south here. Eighteen eighty six Johnson House is to the immediate west. That is right here. Uh, the eighteen ninety six Smith House is to its immediate north. And then Saint Patrick's Church in eighteen ninety six building is located on the diagonal corner. So again, this request is construct a new two thousand one hundred five square foot excluding basement level primary dwelling. And to construct a one hundred sixty four point four three square foot accessory building. Uh, and by all means, if uh, in going through this presentation, there are things that are typically. Uh, not said or things that are well known to the commission, please don't hesitate to let me know. Uh, I want to ensure that this is as efficient as possible for everyone. Uh, but overall precepts of the design guidelines, keep it simple, keep it in scale, respect historic resources. Make all new design compatible with the existing context. What we're looking at specifically here is the uh. Historic residential design guidelines, in addition, the exterior and site lighting guidelines. Going through the review, the first item that stood out was historic residential design guideline number five, that being pedestrian scale. Uh we have the relevant portions of that design guideline here. Uh was identified as neither the plan set nor the project narrative clearly depict or specify retention of the existing Spruce Street. Stones sidewalk span. Uh specifically sheet A dash zero zero four depicts the sidewalk terminating at the northern boundary. Two twenty six North Spruce Street, that is the property immediately to the south. Uh and depicts the proposed garage wing walls, the front entry steps and a stone retaining wall. In the sidewalk alignment, this relates to visual interest and scale, the Galena Avenue elevation. Shown here where the cursor is pointing. Uh is monolithic in appearance, reduced height, second floor balcony differing cladding proposed for the eastern end. The Galena Avenue elevation failed to provide sufficient visual interest, in addition, the elevation does not step down in scale toward the street. As relates to building orientation, this is historic residential design guideline number twelve. Uh the primary building is, where the building is primarily rectilinear in form. Uh the wall planes do run in line with partial property lines thereby reinforcing the image of the town grid. Uh while oriented toward the street, that being primary entrance, the lack of a clearly identifiable front porch. Does not allow the spruce entrance to read as primary entrance, the presence of the first floor entrance. With an open porch. On Galena Avenue further diminishes the ability of the spruce entrance to convey its primary entrance status, a clearly identifiable porch. Will not required is supported by the design guidelines and is encouraged. With respect to building setbacks, uh the planes of both the Spruce Street and Galena Avenue building facade set within required setbacks. Uh however, the front landing. And two sets of stairs at the west end of the house extend beyond the setback, likewise, the deck extending westward and southward. Uh from the northeast corner of the house to include the deck stairs extend beyond their respective setback lines, the westward extending deck. Particularly when paired with monolithic design of the Galena Avenue elevation is in contravention of the guideline calling for special consideration of corner lots. In addition, the accessory structure sits stairs sit outside the rear setback line further. The garage wing walls extend beyond the parcel property line. Respect to fences and walls, this is a an area that needs clarification, neither the plan set nor the project narrative clearly depict or specify the material. Proposed for garage wing wall construction, applicant should confirm the proposed wall materials consistent with design guideline fifteen B three. For parking design here, the proposed garage is located within the primary building footprint. With its entrance fronting Spruce Street along the primary facade of the home. The garage wing walls extend outward beyond both the setback and the property line and as such, do not subordinate to other site features. In addition, the angled southern wing wall expands the driveway width beyond the vertical side planes of the garage entrance. As relates to mass and scale, uh well previously, as previously touched on, uh. On the Spruce Street elevation displays an irregular massing and does step down toward the street. The Galena Avenue elevation is monolithic in appearance, reduced height, second floor balcony. And differing cladding proposed for the eastern end of the Galena Avenue elevation fail to sufficiently break up its massing. And the elevation does not step down in scale toward the street. To relates to roof form, historic residential design guideline nineteen. Uh the shed roof posed for the southern portion of the west end of the home, that is the primary facade. Is asymmetrical with the front facing gable roof, uh in addition, the westernmost. Three dormers proposed for the north building elevation, each of which measures more than twenty feet in width. Stand the entirety of the higher roof line, the series of dormers is more characteristic of multifamily housing design and. As such, is contextually inconsistent and detracts from the single family residence nature of the neighborhood. Moving on to building components, the proposed house lacks the basic organization of traditional entry elements while shielded from above. By the second story balcony, the Spruce Street entryway is not covered by a roof in the traditional sense. Is not more substantial in size than a basic entry landing is inconsistent. In mass and scale to those found historically, does not appear to have a finished that is painted appearance. As called for in the just design guidelines. It relates to building material, here we have uh another question uh that requires confirmation from the applicant. Uh neither the plan set nor the applicant narrative clearly depict or specify whether the exterior wood finish is shown on sheet A dash nine hundred. Material schedule will be painted or stained, applicant should confirm that all proposed exterior wood finishes will be painted or stained. As outlined in twenty four dot A dot four. Likewise, neither the plan set nor the applicant narrative clearly depict or specify whether the standing C metal roofing. Is finished with a mat baked on paint, applicant should confirm that all proposed exterior wood finishes will be painted or stained. As outlined in twenty four A four and confirm the standing C metal roof. Will be uh, since it got cut off, uh mat baked on paint. Respect to windows, uh neither the plan set nor the project narrative clearly depict or specify window trim details. This relates to skylight, the plan set depicts a total of seven skylights, two of which are located along the Galena facing. That is north roof and three of which are located along the south roof, the two Galena Avenue facing skylights. Would be highly visible from the street, as would at minimum the westernmost skylight along the south roof. As relates to doors, uh here additional information is needed. Neither the plan set nor the project narrative clearly depict or specify door trim details or provide information as to whether the proposed doors exceed. Two thirds lights, uh proposed house does not feature a well defined front entrance, while the primary entrance is oriented toward the street, that being spruce. Lack of a clearly identifiable front porch does not allow the spruce entrance to read. As a primary entrance, the presence of the first floor entrance. With an open porch on Galena Avenue further diminishes the ability of the spruce entrance to convey its primary entrance status. Uh there are also exterior lighting uh and interior lighting uh guidelines. Uh that are not addressed sufficiently in the. Uh proposal and and will be addressed in conditions, uh there is a note uh that being public works planning and building staff. Have identified items that will need resolution prior to building permit issuance, but these should not impede the Hark review process. Uh moving on to uh findings. A determination is this project is inconsistent with or has not sufficiently demonstrated. Consistency with twelve of the thirty one historic residential design guidelines. In addition, neither the plan set nor the narrative demonstrate consistency with exterior and site lighting guidelines one or two. As such, a continuance is recommended so as to allow the applicant time to address the below conditions. Uh the below conditions uh in motion being as follows. Uh suggest continuation uh with the following conditions, that is condition one, modify the Galena Avenue elevation to reduce. The perceived massing enhanced visual interest and scale down toward the street. Per HR number five A, five B, five B one, thirteen B three, seventeen intro, seventeen B seventeen D. And seventeen D two. Condition two, revised design to allow for the retention of the existing Spruce Streets sidewalk per HR number four A. Condition three, revised design to ensure the front porch is clearly identifiable as suggested in HR number twelve B one.
Hey, John.
Yes, sir.
Per your request, you you've been very thorough, if you just want to read the condition and and not read all the. Guidelines since we have them on the screen, I I think that'd be relevant.
Absolutely, uh so just the condition and exclude the applicable guidelines.
Well, yeah, the guidelines as shown or whatever, you don't have to read them all.
Okay, very good, uh well do, thank you uh for the guidance, I appreciate it. Uh revise, design to ensure the building footprint and the footprint of all associated objects and structures demonstrate special consideration. Of the corner lot location and sit within established setback lines and parcel boundaries. Condition five, relocate the garage to a location that comports. With design guidelines, condition six, revise the plans to ensure the proposed shed roof at the south side of the primary facade. Comports with guidelines, condition seven, revise the plans to ensure the primary entrance reads as such. Condition eight, revise the Galena Avenue roof line to a design with a reduced number of dormers and reduce the width of said dormers. Condition nine, provide details relating to proposed doors and associated trim so as to ensure compliance with the guidelines. Condition ten, provide details relating to proposed windows and associated trim so as to ensure compliance with the guidelines. Condition eleven, remove the westernmost two skylights on the north portion of the roof. And the westernmost skylight on the south portion of the roof. Condition twelve, provide cladding and roofing material finish details so as to ensure compliance with guidelines. And condition thirteen, and this relates to the lighting, provide lighting details to ensure uh guidelines with the exterior and site lighting. Guidelines.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you for your thoroughness and I think you'll find the board will probably concur that you didn't, you didn't miss a guideline here.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
On condition number eleven, when you're referring to the south portion of uh. The skylight, are you talking about on that upper roof line or the lower roof line?
Uh the upper roof line, I believe, let me.
Okay.
Go through and confirm here.
I have a question too.
Yes, sir.
On condition number two, revise design allow the retention of the existing Spruce Street sidewalk. At the moment, I walked up there today just to confirm things, there is no sidewalk on that particular piece of property. The sidewalk for the south house ends at the property line. And then it's just pieces of few pieces of stone and maybe a couple of concrete, so I want to know exactly what you were referring to here.
Uh and stone should have been included here earlier in the report, I did indicate that there is what appears to be from photos I viewed. A stone sidewalk, uh so that's what I'm referencing and certainly it's up to the discretion of the commission as to whether or not. Uh you choose to uh remove or modify that condition.
There's more grass than there is pieces of things to walk on. Anyway.
Okay, so noted. They.
Well, unless you were gonna go.
Go ahead.
I hate to bring up land use code compliance again, but I will. Uh in the area plans, the floor area plans, there are three. Areas that don't appear to be included. On level zero two, there's a a fairly square. Area in the plans, it's indicated to open to below. Um as an applicant, I've had to verify. And provide a rationale why that shouldn't be counted, if it's over seventeen feet, it would get counted. Anyway, so there needs to be probably a diagram that indicates that that's not over seventeen feet. Um stairs, as we all here know, do get counted on each level, there are two stairs I see that aren't counted on two levels. Now, they do have some floor area to work with, so that I'm not saying that this pushes them over, but I think there needs to be a more rigorous. Verification of the floor area. Um and then my only other question is about the site coverage diagram, it looks like there's a dark pink hatch and a light. A much more lightly patched area, but there's only one area given, I was just curious. If that was deliberate or accidental.
I'm gonna have the applicant speak to your questions, planning staff worked with the applicant on that, but I think it's best if Chris speak to that.
Yeah, I understood, like I said, I'm not trying to drag us into into a whether we should or shouldn't hear this land use code compliance piece, I just. Having been an applicant, I'm used to having to provide these sorts of verifications.
And as we talked about the last two meetings, the expectation is that they are land use code compliant before, um that's in the land use code. Book uh before they come to Hark, um I also did a quick calculation and it appeared. That they violate the land use code. Site coverage, so um but. Um I mean, we're gonna hear it, um and there's uh continuation recommended and and oh, and by the way. To add a moment of levity, you set, John, tonight a Hark world record.
How so?
My recall, no, it's not my recall, I I am positive that on condition thirteen, we have never. Had twenty seven guidelines relevant cited. To show and to prove your point on condition thirteen, so thank you, congratulations, um six or eight would probably be enough, but. It's fine.
It's nothing.
Thank you, S.
Nothing wrong with being thorough.
Twenty seven, okay, so um we're gonna, unless there's other questions, we'll hear from the applicant and I would. Ask the applicant because I think you've been around long enough, it'd probably be continuation, but the first. Eight items review are are part of the mass and scale and it's. John noted twelve of the thirty one are compliant, but I think we should focus on mass and scale tonight. And then if if that's okay with you, but I'll I'll let you proceed.
Sure, thank you for the record, Chris Hawkins with uh Alpine Planning. I'll let Alex, who's online too as well, he's gonna start out the presentation, Alex Tejeros. It's a project architect.
Okay.
Um but uh and I'll let him address the site coverage issues, I appreciate the heads up on that, we'll. Double check everything before it comes back in. Um okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, so I'll be ready when Alex is ready to talk.
Yeah, hello, everybody, um sorry I couldn't make it tonight, uh I appreciate hearing uh the this application. Um I'm gonna go through, it might be a little bit unorthodox, but I'm gonna go through a little bit of the design. Uh background methodology and kind of concept uh as we introduce and it relates directly to the massing, et cetera. Um so in general, uh you know, this concept, we approached this house kind of a sort of conversation across time. Uh as a designer, I find it very interesting and challenging on how to negotiate contemporary culture and and historic relationships, uh. So we attempted and looked at this design, not necessarily as just copying uh and referencing through. Historical projects, but in in terms of bringing historical references and historical uh. Uh repetition into more of a contemporary discourse and discussion and. Obviously, with contemporary architecture, the way that we're moving neutrality, efficiency. Um being emotionally mute, or if not mute, then forced in terms of detailing, uh we wanted to look and uh. Move back without nostalgia and copying, but move forward without sterility. Um yeah, so Chris, can you just hold this for a second? Yeah, I'll get to the next slide in one second, um again, elements of gabled roof volumes, rusticated bases from Telluride's visual vocabulary. And rearticulating them through tectonics, texture, not mimicry, but sampling or referencing. Uh and one way to bridge this gap in through, not through massing yet, but was through uh texture is detail. Where materials carry weight grain, uh instead of, you know, applied ornament. So utilizing shadow gaps, board widths, material adjacencies, et cetera, to bring visual interest to the project. And the second is, you have, what we're referring to is through massing, and in this case, the building becomes an embedded object perched lightly on a quarry like base, so. It's composed in dialogue with its neighbors and surroundings, which you'll see in some, a series of diagrams in a minute. But ultimately sculpting a place of memory, material and presence. Um so yes, you can go to the next slide. Essentially to cite this project, uh again, we have the kind of East Colorado Ave um entrance and exit towards new North Spruce Street. Next slide, please. The site itself, um two thirty four North Spruce Street is actually a very interesting uh lot. Uh very different than it's um than other corner lots in the area, which I think needs to be respected in the sense that. To the north of our lot is actually an alleyway, the alleyway does not continue uh straight up through the block, but actually. Turns west and moves along the north end of our site. Therefore, setting us back, you know, and and the entire alleyway width from Galena. And that's where our site starts. The other thing too, as was mentioned, the historical projects or historic uh buildings adjacent to us and all sides, the one directly to the south. Um because of the nature of the building itself, uh the slender profile and the kind of hor- uh horizontality east west, uh there's a. Uh large enough green buffer, which we're referring to around that project and it's adjacent to our site. And it's something else that we wanted to respect in terms of the sighting and the massing of the project. If you go to the next slide. Again, the way that the project is associated uh or or located on the site, if we take uh North Spruce uh up vertically north south. You'll see that majority of projects, or sorry, majority of buildings, houses on the site uh face perpendicular uh to North Spruce. If you go to the next slide, our corner specifically uh is very much run. If you go to the next slide, our corner specifically, uh, is very much running, um. You know, long facade east-west, uh, and that way we can, um. Address the kind of town grid and the city grid, uh, associating to that. And again, if you can see the context on either side of our site as we move west or east. Uh, things return to being perpendicular to the Galena Ave, um, uh, street. If you go to the next slide. So context, reference and texture, yeah, this one. So essentially, um, these are kind of six different guidelines that we used for the frameworks that we use for designing this project. Obviously, number one is the kind of contemporary referencing, so translating historical forms. Gabled roofs, plans, et cetera, everything that we know that's within the guidelines, uh, utilizing all of that. Uh, textures detail, as I mentioned before, so looking at material, uh, to, uh, texture instead of applied detail. Tectonic grounding, one of the things that we talked about mostly with the client is essentially that. The, the landscape itself and the site itself has a relatively steep si- slope, uh, from the northeast to the southwest. So utilizing the landscape itself to kind of ground and help to reduce the visual mass overall, uh, by pulling and visually weighting it down. Rhythmic repetition also, uh, which we'll get into. The repetition of the gabled roof forms, again, when respecting the city grid running east-west with our long facade. Trying to find ways to actually break up that facade, both in plan, moving it, uh, I believe it's four inches. It could be a little bit more, but four inches back and forth in plan, north and south. As well as using the gabled roof forms to start to break up, visually break up that mass, uh, since we don't want to necessarily step down to the street because we are set back by the alleyway. Uh, then we have embedded familiarity, again, not nostalgia, these are kind of repetitive, but the last thing, and I just want to be. Uh, completely clear, this is that the, the design of this project happened from the inside out. Uh, Bevan and Chris, the, our clients, um, you know, they're trying to carve a place within Telluride itself, uh, into the city. Uh, them and their three boys have enough, need enough space and enough, uh, flexibility within their planning to be able to actually carve out a space that they're looking for. Um, the three concepts that referred to this, uh, into this design, obviously are context, simplicity and repetition, which you tried to keep on to, hold on to. Reference of mills and mines, which is something that me as a designer was something very inspir- inspirational. And of course the texture, the materiality of the earth. So if you go to the next slide, please. Studying the surrounding context and looking at, yes, understood, uh, the, the comment on terms of multi, um, multifamily. But the idea of the repetition of this gabled roof with varying alleyways between or, or side setbacks between projects and buildings within the site or within the town. Uh, alludes to a very similar repetition of form and gabled roof forms as you move down the street in perspective or in, or in the oblique. The other is the materiality. Again, I understood about the, uh, the matte, uh, stainless steel or standing seam roof. That is definitely clear and that is our intent. Unlike the image to the bottom left, which shows an aluminum roof, more so to the bottom right, where it shows kind of a matte, this one red, but we want to do black. And of course alluding to our, you know, catty cornered neighbor, um, St. Catherine's Church and trying to be sub- subordinate to, to the church itself. Again, the next slide, please.
Got to reshare.
Oh, if you need, I can share.
There we go. Okay.
Okay. Um, so again, the second thing on this list is the mills and mines. This, uh, uh, obviously is, as a designer, is something for me to be inspired by, but I would like to share with you all. Again, the formal language, the material language, the grounding this, of this building and this, this house. All relate to kind of slightly distant contexts that we, that we have within Telluride or outside of Telluride. Uh, but again, the familiarity in terms of the form, the textures and material, external structures being expressed, uh, metal roofs, uh, et cetera, all being as part. Uh, with the design and especially the kind of grounding of the project, uh, vertically downwards. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Um, the texture, and again, this is, uh, I did not specify within the planning whether it was stained or painted. The idea is light staining for the, the facade, uh, and then using, um, differentiation in terms of material to create visual in- interest. And create a smooth rhythm as you move down the street itself, not necessarily having it as a singular monolithic structure. Uh, but again, it's light stained using both shingling and vertical wood, uh, siding. Uh, and that is kind of complementary to the stacked stone, uh, which is called out on all the base structure, um. Including the, uh, the wing walls to the, the garage. Next slide, please. Um, and actually, yes, the, the one image, I don't need to necessarily need to talk about this. We'll talk about this more if you go to the next slide, please. Just to give a little bit of, uh, background, just so everybody sees in terms of the massing itself, uh, next slide, please. Like I said, the site itself is a slightly steep slope from the northeast to the southwest. The idea of this cut and fill to hopefully reduce the amount of waste material, but also to start to play with the topography of the site in a much more. Uh, uniform and simplistic way by flattening down, uh, the bottom portion of the site to the minimum. And then raising up towards the maximum on the top side of the site to allow for front-end, uh, front entrance access. Then again, uh, within the massing, pushing the building, uh, north, uh, both the facade and stepping down to respect the historical building. Uh, directly, the historical home directly south of us, also just to keep in mind, which is not, it should be better, uh, shown on this diagram, but essentially. To the north of our building, we do have the alleyway before Galena starts, so we are set back off of Galena. And then the last thing, of course, is the, the repetition, reducing visual mass. So. Reducing the amount of singular face that would be on that side, again, by optimizing the site to the south. Uh, and pushing up against the north, we kind of help to relieve any pressures to the neighbors. Uh, while also helping that the repetition is actually breaking down the massing more so than, uh, a flat facade. And then the articulation is as such, so the next slide. And just so you see it again, these kind of images or references to the actual project itself, again. The, the hope that the stone side, uh, the stone steps here would indicate, uh, a direct entrance, uh, again, with the kind of painted door, um, the next slide. The other thing, uh, one more slide, sorry. Uh, the next thing to note is in fact that the, again, the slope of the site continues upwards so that any doorway or even window. Along this north end side is actually lower than the street level, again, enhancing the subordinate, uh, quality of, uh, the side face or the north face, um, relative to this, uh, to the west. And again, in terms of materiality, dealing with kind of, uh, the exposed, uh, quote unquote, structure of the exoskeleton. As an ode to the, the historical context of the area, uh, working with, uh, typical kind of, uh, of the earth, as you will, uh, materials. And again, the Kintsugi, uh, kind of a torchwood or burnt, burnt wood for the accessory structure to accent, but not necessarily to contrast. Um, and yes, and then the last facade again, uh, just so you see within the plan, it says it as well, but, uh, essentially. The volume to the left and the volume, it, so it goes, volume to the left is pushed in four inches, then it comes out to meet the site boundary. Then the third volume or, uh, from the left is pushed in again and then back out. So playing with both the facade in terms of pushing in and out, uh, shadow lines where the exposed structure are occurring. As well as a visual interest of the change of materiality between each one of these faces. Uh, and I think Chris, you can take the next portion.
So as far as condition one to modify the elevation, um, to be more pedestrian, uh, towards the street. Again, you've seen the stepping, um, again, the decks also provide the, some pedestrian scale and then Alex just tossed, talked about how. There was some articulation in the massing, uh, front porch, and then you also have a stone wall landscaping that also provide pedestrian scale. So you can kind of see in this. I know that it doesn't really get counted a lot, but I think, you know, when you're looking at it from that context, there is still some pedestrian nature to it. As far as condition two, um, Public Works was supportive of eliminating, uh, well, it's not even there, but of not constructing a sidewalk that wasn't in their referral. Um, so, but if Hark wants it, we're open to it, um, it just would dead in there. It doesn't continue on up. Spruce Street, so we're again, open to that concept if you would like a sidewalk in there, um, but Public Works wasn't going to require that. Um. Condition four, uh, revising the building and footprint to ensure that this corner lot respects setbacks. Again, the proposed five-foot northern setback meets the HR zone requirement. Overall, and there was a comment that there were decks in the setback earlier. That's pretty typical until you're, I, we are all aware of that. So I think it's really a matter of what part of the building. Area do you have concern on with the setback? I would note that there is the block face setback that's mentioned in the report and how that we really didn't address that. We did address. That setback in the report and, and basically it's about twelve point six feet for the whole block face. So understand you're gonna need to have some discussion about what the appropriate setback for this should be. Um, we're advocating for a five-foot setback, um, overall, because again, the property is only sixty-seven and a half foot deep. It's pretty unique with the alley on the north side. That gives you this larger open space to Galena Avenue. Um, and the alleyway to the north opens up the site on the opposite, which we were showing you with that open space as well in the plan. And it's also basically trying to maximize the green area in the site on the south side. And so Alex already talked and showed you how it was pushed up to the north side by design. Um, and. As far as the, this plan overall, this is just a zoom in of that. I know there's no guarantee of this always being open space, but I think you understand the concept that he was discussing in there. As far as condition five, this is a fairly big one for us, uh, relocating the garage to a different location. Um, it's overall, it says design parking areas to be accessed from alleys or rear drives rather than primary street. And again, it talks about detached garage along the alley and in this case we don't have a traditional lot. It's very difficult to meet this. Um, there's also a topographic change of about four feet, which you saw in the diagrams. And Hark has approved primary, uh, access off of streets for garages. In, on challenging lots sites, uh, three thirty-six North Oak is one example. Um, in this instance, the alley was Tomboy Road. So there was no real option there. And so you have a little driveway grade going down similar to what we're proposing here. And then three oh six North Willow, um, this one had an alley in the back. It's got steeper grades, but again, this one was set up to have two. Accesses for a unique situation on that property. One was for Rick Silverman's parking and access and the other was for the primary home. As far as condition six, uh, the shed roof, um, sloping reforms. Are, are what's proposed and by symmetrical, do you mean matching the roof? Slope from above because symmetrical is kind of even on both sides and shed reforms. By their nature are not symmetrical and there are lots of examples around town of. Shed roof forms being next to homes. This is over at one fifteen West Galena. And then this is up at three seventeen North Spruce. This is before the, the really bad, uh, alteration that happened back in. Before twenty-ten that took off half of this, um, kind of historic side of the home. Um, so. There's some level of this being seen historically and I think it's in this instance, it works, but by. Getting some clarity on what you mean by symmetrical would be very helpful for this situation because I'm not sure how you do that with the shed reform. Um, three oh six North Willow, it's a little similar to, um, in terms of you having just a, uh, you know, this little shed addition on the side. Of a building, um, condition eight, uh, revising the roof line to design with the reduced number of dormers. Alex has already made his pitch for that and why he did that. Um, conditions seven, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. Fine, well, we understand those, we'll get to it. And with that, we'll ask you if you have any questions, so.
Okay, questions for the applicant? Well, we'll hear from the public first and then I have a kind of a summary comment.
Yeah, and i- if we could, since there are some big building mass and changes before you get to deliberation, if we could kind of do Q and A like on garage location or something like that. So there can be a little dialogue on that, that would be helpful. So thank you.
Well, actually, um. Before the public, then if there are any comments. I, I think that. Uh, Alex, I really, I think this is maybe your first time in front of us, but if, if all I did was see. The front drawing G zero and A two hundred surrounded, and, and I knew that this was surrounded by these eighteen ninety's houses. In a sensitive historic neighborhood. I wouldn't have to look at another page to know that this needs to be massively redesigned, uh, with respect to mass and scale in particular. But, so I think what could we best accomplish answering Chris's question? I think we could give you feedback or ask questions. Well, i- in, in the deliberations, we're gonna deliberate setbacks because I think we need to decide that. I think when you. I need, think we need to decide this garage location that, because you gotta have some path forward. Um, so setbacks, garage location, and if there's any additional comments on mass and scale or, or questions, we can ask it now. But when we get to deliberations, those are thing and I think it's gonna be continuance and, and. We'll take a straw pull, but looking ahead, I don't think anybody could design this in the next ten days, uh, to make the October hearing.
So it's why I made some initial inquiries about them.
Yeah, okay. So, but that said, I want to get the cart ahead of the horse. Do you have any other questions for him? Otherwise we'll hear from the public and then start deliberation.
Staff, did y'all speak at all about a work session potentially?
We did have a pre-application meeting with the applicant and we strongly suggested a work session.
No. Doesn't, there's no rule that says you can't go back to one and then we could have the free wheeling feedback, but. Well, you'll hear the feedback in deliberations and, um. We'll see, uh, where that goes, but is there any public comment? Electronically, if you're out there, if you raise your hand, please. Okay. Kate Piper, I don't see anybody raising hands. So I guess I'll just kick it off that I think it's, needs to be continued to the November nineteenth and frankly. Unless you want to add on to something or clarify something, the only deliberation that I would suggest. Is talk about the setbacks and the garage, maybe the sidewalk. But the biggest suggestion would be to have a sit down with staff, whether you do a work session or not. And really listen to staff and try to get this mass and scale corrected before it comes back. I mean, this is not wasting your time and everybody else's. But I, I, I would agree, a work session.
I just said, and real quick, before you go to deliberation, I don't recollect the co- work session comment in our pre-op meeting and we did get good comments on those that were taken into account. So. Well, we, point just taken as well. So it's, if there was a strong recommendation.
We'll leave it up to you.
We delayed it, but that said, we're, we look forward to, you know, any direction and thoughts and I agree those bigger points.
Well, the, the, in a work session, as you know, the free wheeling, you can tell Alex about the free wheeling back and forth that we could have would. Might be useful, but we're gonna leave that up to you. So there's no public comment and, and so I would like to at least talk about the setbacks. Um, maybe the sidewalk and the garage. And if you have some additions to what, um, there are, or the, the conditions that are written up here, that's great, but. I think it needs a massive rework and so. I'm not sure. How the applicant really responded to staff, because this, this is not what, if staff was in the room, I know staff would have not. Given me sheet A two hundred that looks like a multifamily home project. I'm, I'm. Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm quoting staff. I didn't make that up, but I agree. So can we talk about setbacks for a minute?
Well, well, let me start. Um, as an applicant, I have been involved with, with two projects where we did have. A ramp down garage entry. In both of those situations, it was on a much steeper street where our low end was much lower and our high end was much higher. Uh, both of those driveways are. Complicated and difficult and. A challenge. Um. With that said, this, it, it, the applicant did speak to this lot being unique and that it doesn't have, it's more square shaped and it doesn't have alley access, but what it does have. Is an alley on its north side, which is not being taken advantage of in any way. And in fact, this house kind of throws its back up against that alley. I think in this case. Accessing a, a grade level garage with, without the need to ramp very much up. Or down at all, and you could then have storage space below that would be a much simpler elegant solution here with, with a much less invasive effect on Spruce Street itself.
Off Galena.
Off the alley.
The, oh, yeah, the Galena.
The Galena alley.
Take advantage.
Over gravel separates the.
Right. So the garage, yeah, the. I don't mind the attempt to have a garage access this way. Like I said, I've been involved with two that tried to do or have done the same thing. I'm just sharing out loud of the applicant, it's problematic. On a, on a site which lent itself to it more so. Um, so that's my, my one thing is that, yeah, the garage. Is a big deal in relocating and I, I can understand the motivation for having it located where it is, but. I think there's a better place for it. The second thing, yeah, I already alluded to it is treating Galena like. Like the, like the back alley, throwing up a, 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 literal. Hundred-foot wall up against Galena is, I don't think is appropriate. We need to see facade plane changes in the, in the order of feet, not four inches. Four inches is barely perceptible. Um, and then like we've already talked about, I understand the sentiment. Of having the, the gable forms, the repetition of those forms evoke all these sort of mountain things and, you know, the popcorn alley photos certainly and, and other Colorado Avenue with this. Stack repetitive dormers is something we see. But what it does instead here is it provides so, it creates. provides so it creates so much more wall area. And I mean, nineteen B, we're blessed with this really short guideline, limit number and size of dormers. That's it. That hasn't been done here. So those are two. And then I will say, I do appreciate how the there's kind of this effort to create like a courtyard space in the middle of the lot. That's going to be great for the owners. It's not very good for anyone on Spruce or Galena. There needs to be a lot more positive open space on the Galena side and on the Spruce front. There you go.
Thanks.
Along with the the garage idea, I walked up there today and I I tried to see how you can make that work to come off of Galena off that alley. And I think it's possible, certainly possible. But one other thought was that because that shed is right in plane with the the main building, main part of the house that's the primary facade. If that were pushed back, you could do a bit of a driveway and still go down if you wanted to keep the the garage on the front, which there's there's a number of them on Spruce Street.
You'd have more.
It's got one. It's a lot more subtle.
Yeah, there's there's five, I think, just on that block on the other side of the street. But anyway, it does exist. And so I wouldn't say that's that's totally wrong to do that. But if it was pushed back, you wouldn't be blocking this the sidewalk. You could have a sidewalk that goes through where it needs to be. And also, it would reinforce the main structure reading as the primary facade and the shed pushing it back helps you with that. And I I wrote a I wrote a condition. It said, push the large south shed back so that the main structure reads as the primary building form for eighteen intro, A A two and A three. That kind of coincides with six.
Okay.
But I still think that with Stacy's idea of you know, incorporating it maybe at the back end of that building somehow off of the Galena alley is a good good option, too.
And having a garage located on the alley or the rear
Yes.
is preferable.
Yes.
And I will say, Chris, the 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 project you references has an Oak Street address, and the the garage is located as far away from Oak Street as physically possible.
Oh, absolutely. And I I sorry.
That's okay. I it it's it's every project's a challenge, and I appreciate that this one has some special and unique challenges. I think we're just looking at ways to preserve that street as much of the streetscape on Spruce as we can.
I agree with that.
And wing walls turning all the way out through the town ride way where a sidewalk could be not ideal either. And that's a that's almost a three story element.
Yes.
That included.
And just know that balconies alone are without a wall plane are not going to suffice for, you know, the step back from the street and or alley. So I think the most important thing that could happen would be to really work with staff. If you don't have a work session with us, have one with them. And let's get this right, but it it's got a ways to go. So Bob, you want to add Bob's condition fourteen?
Is that okay?
I'm okay with it.
Because it doesn't talk about the garage. It talks about that element being pushed back.
Yeah, well, so mass and scale is what we're focused on rightly. So we we could go into a bit of just for informational purposes to some of the other conditions. Condition two, the sidewalk. I think that sidewalk leads essentially to St. Patrick's.
Yeah.
Right? And that is actually on my route to walk from my house to the hardware store. And I end up going I end up walking on the street because that sidewalk on that side doesn't exist.
It's just on that property line.
But that because it's not there now doesn't mean it should be. And I'm actually surprised Public Works didn't weigh in.
Well, we're, I think we've given them some ideas, but a work session, we'd be doing this all night. But should we add Bob's condition fourteen? It's my only question. Then I think we should have a motion to continue.
It gives them a little more information about what we're thinking about in terms of.
You okay with that?
And I have another one, too.
Oh.
This this one's a simple one. Just says windows should be be traditional in size and scale per twenty-five intro C and D.
Okay. Okay.
You can also help the the sky like that lower roof.
Well, I wasn't even going to get into.
I know, but it's just.
Two of them are are shapes that we don't typically see. One of them's the size we don't ever see. So we could go into that, too.
Bob, ready?
Okay. So we're going to keep one through thirteen as written plus the two. Okay, I move to continue to November nineteenth.
Yep.
Nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the small scale new construction, two thirty-five North Spruce Street, based on a memo dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, with the following conditions. Condition one through thirteen as written. Add fourteen, push the large south shed back so that the main structure reads as the primary building form per eighteen intro, A, A two and A three. And fifteen, windows should be traditional in size and scale per twenty-five intro C and D. Have to say anything else on that?
This.
We're not doing it.
No, there's no revised plans. Yeah.
Okay.
All second.
Okay, Stacy.
Stacy, yes.
Mark is.
Bob, yes.
Andrew, yes.
See you on the nineteenth. Good luck with staff. Okay, so we have two work sessions tonight. The first one is list seven, neighborhood plan for the Carhenge.
And I have to recuse myself
Okay.
because of the location. I live across the street.
Okay. Consideration application for work sessions, proposed new construction of lift seven neighborhood on property pursuant to land use code five two oh one C. Legal description slots thirty-four and thirty-five or thirty-four B lock Bachman Village. According to the plat record June twenty ninth, nineteen seventy-nine under reception number twenty-one three oh one, County San Miguel. Carhenge, seven hundred Pacific Avenue is the address. Accommodations two is the zone district. Town of Telluride is the owner. Applicant Design Workshop Staff Member Kristen Collier.
Mark, I have a favor to ask you. May we take a three minute break before we dive into the work session? Might that be okay?
Oh, sure. We can take a three minute bio break right now.
Okay, thank you, bio break.
We're reconvening at seven fifty-one from a break. And we just read the project title, so we will continue with this. And Kristen Claudeier is the staff member.
Okay, thank you so much, Mark. So this is a work session on the lift seven neighborhood plan, the Carhenge site. Uh, Mark, prior to the break, read the details about this project, so I'm going to move us forward. High level existing land use is primarily a large paved parking lot, zone districts accommodations two. And I think the only other thing I'll mention is it's in the accommodations treatment area. So before I dive fully into this, this is the the location that we are speaking about this evening. High level overview, this Hark work session is an opportunity for the applicant to have a preliminary informal conversation with Hark. The proposed project on the Carhenge site is in the preliminary conceptual design phase. The applicant is seeking guidance from Hark prior to taking any next steps towards preparing a formal Hark application. So project background and context. The project stems from the community values outlined in Telluride's master plan and the Southwest area conceptual plan adopted by the Telluride Town Council in twenty twenty-one, which outlines a comprehensive vision for revitalizing the Southwest quadrant of Telluride. As stated in the vision statement provided by the applicant for the project, in response to critical local needs around housing, transportation, and livability, the town of Telluride has launched the Lift Seven Neighborhood Project, a community driven vision to create to create a vibrant mixed use neighborhood that directly serves the people of Telluride. The Lift Seven Neighborhood Plan as presented seeks to integrate current community needs with longstanding community values. As the applicant notes, the aim is to create an integrated mix of residential, community, commercial, transit, and hospitality uses to support a vibrant year round community. And the applicant identified the following goals through the planning process. Prioritize pedestrian access connectivity and multimodal circulation, passive connectivity and passive green space, and development complement community character. Land use code compliance, just high level, just so, you know, the members of Hark and the public have this background. A formal land use code compliance review will take place following the submission of a complete Hark application. Prior to this work session, staff did review the land use code requirements with the applicant to ensure the applicant is taking land use code requirements and constraints into account at this preliminary conceptual design stage of the project. But again, these are very, very early preliminary conversations. Concurrent with a Hark application, the applicant anticipates submitting a conceptual P U D application to the Planning and Zoning Commission to request variations to dimensional limits. Anticipated requests for variations to dimensional limits include a maximum building height increase of fifty feet, fifty-five feet to the highest ridge for partially below grade buildings along the hillside, which incorporate two levels of fully enclosed parking and a maximum per building floor area increase above thirty thousand square foot limitation. So as you all know, the four overall precepts of the design guidelines, keep it simple, keep it in scale, respect the historic resources, and make all new design compatible to the existing context. For this first work session on the proposed project, while it is still in its preliminary conceptual phase, the aim is for Hark to focus on the design guidelines that are particularly pertinent at this early stage of project design. So very high level and this is, these are just a few images. I'm going to leave it up to the applicant to present their project. So I'm just sharing a couple of the images they provided with you, and then they will speak to them. But just for reference, as we talk about the design guidelines. All right. So key town of Telluride design guidelines for this discussion. High level, we're in the accommodations treatment area, and the introduction to that treatment area is very helpful in thinking about this project and how that overall treatment area is is explained through the design guidelines. So within this treatment area, a mix of uses is allowed. Projects may include both residential and commercial uses. Even though a general visual continuity with the older parts of town is desired, this may be balanced with natural constraints and some variety in building character. Whenever feasible, established characteristics of site orientation and street layout found in the historic residential areas of Telluride should also be expressed in this treatment area. This is particularly important for projects on large parcels that may have a substantial impact on the area. And therefore, special care should be taken when designing a project to ensure that it is visually integrated in mass scale and character with the neighborhood and the town. When seen from a distance, the within this treatment area, the project should appear to be a part of the community with essentially the same perceived street and alley arrangements, building forms and scale of development. And that, again, is emphasized as being particularly important for projects on large parcels that span several parcels. In this treatment area, more variety and architectural design is appropriate than in other areas, but should maintain visual continuity with the historic district. The this project is also located with in the accommodations treatment area within the River Park Hillside area edge south of the river, which has steep slopes that require different technical responses. And plan projects to preserve reinforced existing view quarters into a establish new view opportunities, excuse me. And the project should enhance the river edge as a public amenity. So that's the the high level grounding us in this treatment area. And I know Hark members are very familiar with the design guidelines. I thought it might be helpful to go over just a few that are really important to have in mind in this preliminary work session phase so that the general public is also tuned into what you'll you'll be looking for. So I first start with mass and scale. That is the most important thing we'll focus on in in these two work sessions. And I flagged within your memo, the staff memo, a number of specific design guidelines that you may want to be discussing this evening. And then as the the projects move forward, should they move forward? But building sizes that appear to be similar in scale to those found historically in town. Heights of buildings should vary, but increase closer to the mountains. Just going to highlight a few here. The primary building facade should not exceed fifty feet in width without a significant setback. So facade width should reflect traditional lot widths. Lots of discussion, of course, about variations in facade treatment through structures, including in roof lines, front and rear facades, so that the composition appears to be a collection of smaller buildings. Building heights on larger projects should be a variety. Some one and two story elements at the sidewalk and alley edges. New construction should appear similar in mass and scale to historic structures found in similar areas, residential or commercial throughout town. And again, I'm focusing a lot on the mass and scale in the ones that relate most to this project. Large lots should be developed with several buildings rather than a single structure to help reduce the perceived scale of the project. The area between buildings should contribute to the overall positive open space of the site. A facade should appear similar in dimension to those seen historically in the town. Typically, you know, this for residential, it's fifteen to thirty feet in width. Setbacks can can help to allow for some additional width in commercial settings. Typical facade width was twenty-five feet. And so thinking about using the this size module when when thinking through projects and bringing proposals forth, a larger building may be divided into modules that reflect that traditional scale of construction. And stepping down the mass of larger buildings to minimize the perceived scale of the street. And emphasis on the historic proportions of height, width, and depth, of course, are very important to be compatible with the historic mass and scale. I then flagged in your staff memo, and I won't get into details here, but just a handful of the other design guidelines that, at this work session preliminary stage, might be beneficial to talk through with the applicant. So pedestrian scale, that visual interest from street alleys and pedestrian ways, stepping down of the buildings in combination with positive open space. And there's emphasis in this treatment area on this being especially important for large buildings and projects on large parcels. The context compatibility, so new interpretations of traditional building types are encouraged, such that they are seen as products of their own time, yet compatible with historic resources in the vicinity. So historic proportions of height, width, and depth, again, is emphasized to be compatible with historic mass and scale. The relationship to the town grid. So, and this is especially important whenever possible in this treatment area, so that it appears to be an integral part of the community rather than a separate enclave. And especially, again, on these larger projects. And then the last few, building form. Use building forms that are similar to those found historically. Provide articulation, the wall planes, to break up the mass and scale. And architectural character, again, new interpretations of traditional building styles are encouraged that draw upon the fundamental traits of historic buildings without copying them. Products of their own time, compatible with their historic neighbors. Our HARC members know these design guidelines very, very well. I wanted to bring forth some of these just as we start the conversation. The applicant will present their project and and then enter into discussion. So the requested action this evening is for HARC to provide general feedback on the information options presented by the applicant in this preliminary conceptual design phase. Again, this work session is focused specifically on the town parcels. And the applicant will speak to that, and then we'll have a subsequent second work session. HARC's review at a work session is not intended to vest the applicant or public with any reliance as to the outcome of the formal development review process per Land Use Code Section five two oh one C five. So I'm going to stop there, and the applicant will now share their project with you.
Good evening, guys. My name is Faras. I'm the landscape architect with Design Workshop, and I'm joined today by Erica Williams with Olson-Kundig Architects. And we're excited to discuss this project and get your feedback this evening. We'll share my screen here and get rolling. Thanks for the intro, Kristin. Think you did a wonderful job summarizing kind of the the introduction aspects of the project. So I'm going to breeze through that. I think one of the things we'll want to start with is just defining kind of the development program. So what we've been tasked with is testing two hundred and twenty to two forty affordable housing units, mix of, mix of number of bedrooms, as well as mix of free market versus, a limited number being free market. We've also been asked to look at integrating ten thousand square feet of commercial, as well as self-parking this per the Land Use Code. We wanted to start today by looking at the figure ground level plans as it starts to illustrate how we've organized the buildings based on our allowable site coverage. The density is outlined in the Southwest Area Plan and refined throughout the process, as well as the feedback we've received from the community and town council along the way. I want to point out a few big moves here. On the north, you're going to notice that the the buildings front the San Miguel River, where we've intentionally set the buildings back to allow for meaningful buffer. And what you're going to see in the three D views is that we thoughtfully stepped the building heights, setting the tallest buildings along the southern hillside and the lowest buildings along the north, which we feel creates a really inviting frontage to the neighborhood and lowers the perceived mass and scale of the development. Along the south of the hillside up to Telluride Trail gives us an opportunity to really stitch the buildings into the hillside, utilizing the natural terrain and enclose some of our parking requirements. The plan is set predominantly on the town grid, with the southernmost buildings responding to the orientation of the natural terrain of the site. We've also enclosed all of the parking required as part of this development in two partially buried structures, which you'll see are these two bigger polygons on the level zero plan. One level on the on the front polygon and two levels on the back polygon. Moving on to the site plan, as as Kristin noted, the project is part of a larger planning effort that looks at Lot L, Tract Y, and Carhenge kind of as a holistic planning exercise. And looking at the design of the Carhenge site in particular, which is the focus of this work session, we felt like one of the most important aspects of creating this mixed-use vibrant neighborhood is taking back area often given to the cars and giving it back to the pedestrians. For the development, the two hundred and thirty spaces is no small amount of area. So what we've done is we've pulled the cars right at the entry across tomboy into the secondary circulation network, where you can access these two parking garages that I've alluded to, one entry being in this zone and one being in this zone. And what that's really allowed is it's created a more pedestrian-oriented core to this development that allows us to integrate ground floor commercial uses, these bars, retail, spill-out spaces, that really contribute to the vibrancy of the neighborhood. We we also think that this circulation pattern creates a meaningful buffer from Telluride Mountainside Inn to the east. And so we we feel really good about that aspect of the circulation network as well. The ground floor, the main circulation route, is, as as alluded, activated with bars, restaurants, spill-out areas. And I'll just zoom in, so it's a little bit more legible here. But we were thinking about this as being kind of our commercial frontage zone and kind of the predominantly pedestrian-oriented spaces. As as noted, the the beauty of the the way that the buildings are set on the site is that we are introducing kind of a central park space that connects the lift area with the with the core of this neighborhood. I'm going, whoops. One, one last thing I'd like to point out is that we are, you'll, you'll see that in the middle of these buildings and in the figure, actually flip back to the figure ground, because I think it shows a little bit better. But as you move up in levels, we're we're carving and eroding away the building mass to, again, lower the perceived mass and scale and and density of the overall development. I'm going to now pass it over to Erica, and Erica's going to walk you guys through the architectural development and how the buildings have shaped up. Erica, just give me a next when.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Everyone hears me well?
Yes.
Great, okay. My name's Erica Williams. I'm an Olson-Kundig architect based in Colorado. And just like Faras said, I'm going to share a start with some of the drivers behind the design and then share the views. So we'll rest here for a minute, because this is a big part of how we formed our buildings. So we started the project by attending community meetings. And I got to attend one in person where we collaborated with Design Workshop to put up big boards, and people passed around kind of red no stickers, green yes stickers, of all these precedent and historic images in town. And there was very strong and consistent feedback, which was fantastic to set our team on really a solid course. And what we heard from talking to people, the red and green, and also the comments listed, was that the public really didn't want to see another mountain modern, or modern chalet was another term they used a lot. Instead, they really pointed us to the series of mining buildings that are historic and a great part of the Telluride culture. And so we got interested in those right away. The public was obviously very interested. And so we took some time to really look at them, visit them, and understand kind of their their core characteristics and how we could appropriately try to apply them to our design as well and draw from that vernacular. So for us, let's look at the next one. Okay, so here we are. I'm just going to share some observations we had, and then I'll jump quickly to the views and move pretty fast, because I know we're at the end of a long meeting here. So some observations we made were, first and foremost, these are very simple buildings with iconic and recognizable forms. And we thought that was really important, that they weren't trying to to do anything extra. These are obviously coming from an industrial place, whereas ours has a different program. But really looking at how handsome these kind of solid background buildings are. We also saw a language of shed and gable roofs, sometimes combined, sometimes all one language across the building. We saw portions that kind of popped to get a vertical window into a higher area within the warehouse or mining building that needed to receive some more light. We noticed most windows have a vertical proportion and are not overly large. We also saw that there's a lot of wall ratio in the window-to-wall ratio. And when I tell honor that as best we could as well. Another observation was that these are using very light cladding materials, both on the roof and on the walls. And we also had to notice that so many of these are up against mountain slopes and major changes in contour, and often the roof shape kind of goes with the grade up and down. So our project obviously has a very different program and functionality than these industrial buildings. But these were just observations that we wanted to tie in, to kind of look at this reference and in honor this vernacular. So if we go to the next page, Faras. Okay, so here we are. The key plan might help, but I'll try to describe where we are in space as well. Right now, you're kind of on the, looking at the bridge as we enter the Lift Seven complex. And what you're seeing on the left are those kind of initial townhome buildings. On the right would be more of a commercial, we think, you know, something like a restaurant or retail, something to really engage the public, we'd love a coffee shop on that corner, right? So a nice amenity space right there. And what we hope we're pulling across right away is these simple form buildings with roof shapes that really pull down when it gets to the main circulation area. So the building on the right shows kind of how that roof form low point is right there at the pedestrian level, trying to kind of step down the height and scale of that mass. The next slide, Faras. And you can see here, this is a view, we're across the river, just looking. And what you're seeing in the foreground is that series of more townhomes that kind of invite you into the complex. So they're by far kind of the smallest masses, both in plan and in height, so that we're stepping down as we get closer to the river and closer to town. You can also start seeing throughout all of these a use of really light materials, which we would love your thoughts on. I mean, all of it, but here we're showing a vertical wood siding cladding, a corrugated metal roof. And we have ideas about pulling in maybe the corrugated metal along walls or maybe metal panel to start creating a little bit more difference in modulation throughout the complex. But on this kind of facade, looking towards the river, townhomes, we are showing a bit of a modulation back and forth. I know it's a little quiet, but the thought being a patterning of modulation that kind of honors the historic quietness of the mining building, but also has that that difference and that shift to to relate more to the town of Telluride in larger context. Let's go to the next one. This is the, yeah, this one, we're we're up over and we're going to come down to the ground after this view. But this one hovers over, so you can kind of see the extent of the the complex and the buildings and how how they mass together. Right now, our back, although we are up in the air, is up against, towards the gondola. And you're really getting that main view corridor of Design Workshops Public Park that they're creating between the far back and the middle buildings. And also, I think what this view starts to show is a brow that's lowered right above the ground level. And those brows are meant both to invite people into what are going to be some commercial, retail, and restaurant spaces, and also to create that kind of change in architecture experience from the mass above and what you experience at ground level below. Okay, let's look at the next one. Right, so this similar view takes you up from the sky and plops you down on the ground. You'll notice that we've hidden the trees in this initial view just to describe bare mass. The next slide will show it with trees. But you can see here that we're also studying how to break up building materiality with base versus kind of the upper-level materiality. So you're seeing either more of a glazed base to the left, where there might be commercial spaces, and we want to have that appropriate to that use. Whereas on the right, it's expressing more of that heavier base material that then breaks up and turns to something like a wood or a lighter cladding above. You're also seeing that we're working with the contour. So it's both a matter of being smaller, more granular, towards the town of Telluride and the river. But it's also a matter of stepping up the buildings as the contours raise towards the mountain. We find this to kind of meet the precedence that we're looking at, as well as be sympathetic to the fact that putting those units in those buildings does require us to raise it up to get some sunlight. Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, and I think also here, again, this is the same slide, just showing the softening that good landscape can do. But you're also seeing how the masses towards the park are mostly coming down with the lowest slope of the roof, that low point, at the park and at that more pedestrian level. And our hope and intention is that when you're up against these buildings, you're feeling the lower portion of them and not the full height of the building. Right? And again, this is really just trying to share where we're at with this building that's in the back, probably has the most vertical exposure. So we wanted to kind of show our worst-case scenario to get your feedback and thoughts on how we treat that. This view also does a really good job of expressing how each of these larger masses, there's kind of that circulation alley within them for those mixed unit developments. Let's go to the next. Right, there we are with trees, always, always helpful. This view is looking from kind of one of the south back buildings, where obviously a bird up in the air. And for us, if you could put your cursor on where the Cimarron Lodge is, that might help for context. We found this view really helpful for really showing our forms versus an existing form that you, you know, understand the height and scale of well. And so you can see that we're kind of playing with a similar height and scale of what's existing, very simplified forms. We are popping up a few dormer locations where it was really helpful to get natural light into a top loft or bedroom of a unit, but have tried to not put dormers everywhere and keep the design as simple as possible. Okay, let's go to the next one. Great, this is our last view. We're back on the ground plane. It's, that's the Cimarron Lodge mass to the left in white. And we're looking, that path that you're looking at, the main path, leads you towards the entry bridge, back towards the river. And again, I think we're showing here how simple buildings, light materials, trying to honor a lot of the proportions on the mining buildings, yet recognizing, because in the nature of residential, it's probably going to have a bit more window than what the industrial buildings have, but trying to really stay true to those proportions and be part of Telluride. So we were really interested to hear what you think.
Okay, thank you. And since this is b wheeling, maybe I'll just kick this off with some questions. First of all, thank you for having a work session, number one. This project's got a lot of scrutiny, and everyone wants to get it right for the whole community. But referring to the guidelines, I think it was great that you did the, first obvious thing was pushing more of the height and mass up near the mountains and then trickle down from there. I have about three questions. Number one, if we could go back to the site plan, which was the second drawing in, and for us was going through those buildings. So those are both I and M parking garages. Um, so those are both I and M parking garages uh side by side? Or is it just one? Can you point to that again?
Uh, yeah, let me, let me do this. Oops.
Both of those?
That's, yep, that's one parking garage, and then there's another parking garage right there. This one you enter in here. This one you enter in here.
And so my question is, um at the July twenty third meeting, halfway through the meeting, I heard um your presentation. I was here in the audience where you said that there would be some underground parking. Which of these two big garages are have underground um one or two levels down?
Both are actually built on the existing grades, so starting at plus thirty. And part of that is due to the flood, uh the groundwater and the flood flood base flood elevation that's driving kind of our finished floor start point. Uh, we could get down to twenty eight, but the civil engineer has requested us stay at thirty um based off of some of the floodplain mapping that they've been doing. Uh, I think our goal is to partially bury these structures. So what we've done is we've actually got this one transitions two stories in grade along these edges. And so it's fully buried on this end. And then it's one story buried on this end. So we're actually in, we're rising along these east-west moments to a midpoint that's allowing us to enter these buildings a story above.
Okay, and 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 you know, over on Lot L, I read Lance was kind enough to provide the structural engineering report. I've studied it, um water levels at three to seven feet. I assume that's where you're uh contemplating water here also, similar.
Yeah.
And 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 I guess that's the most important thing I have to say tonight. Then I have just a couple of other questions. That underground parking solves six problems immediately. The height, which we don't even have anything to contemplate, five stories in our guidelines. So I I can't imagine how that could get approved. Uh, it helps with the overall mass and scale, two, three, the view corridor, four. Um, more open space, five. It it helps with the adjacency neighborhoods uh be fit more context of the neighborhood. And it could allow at least twenty to thirty, I did a quick calculation, additional affordable housing units. Just by putting one story of underground parking in these two places. So the private sector has done it all around you with underground parking. I think it's not a a unreasonable expectation to ask you to consider putting one story at least underground on these two. I realize you build up the dirt turf on the south one on half of it uh to be somewhat hidden. But it solves those six problems or lar- largely solves those six problems. And I I think it would be almost negligent not to do what the private sector does. And use raft foundations, and we know the other methods to get around the groundwater. So that's, that's one, that was one question, and you just answered it and and that came up another question. The other thing is the heights of the buildings um contemplated. Um, I'm going to look at, well, we can look anywhere, but on the higher portions where it shows five stories up here. What's the height of that gable? And I saw you were going for a P U D to get fifty to fifty-five foot heights, which the next place that has that is probably Denver. Um, Colorado. Wh- where, where, what is the height there of that building that now shown at fifty? Worse, fifty-five feet? The highest section up uh on the south end?
Uh, the one, the one labeled I?
Uh, yeah, I'll go back to this.
Yeah, so that way, you know what, I have it in front of me because we thought that might come up. The average roof height is at thirty-eight feet. And the highest point is, it's just a couple pe- feet under the fifty-five.
Okay, and then the the housing or the units above the gar- the parking garages? Um, what are those heights?
The middle ones?
Yes.
Yeah, the middle ones average drops to about thirty. And that highest roof point, it's not as big of a delta from the average, it's um right under forty.
Oh, what what's, where's forty feet?
Uh, the the top of the, the top of the roof.
Okay, and um, where are the, where are the free market units contemplated in there? And nothing to do with the guidelines, I'm just curious.
Right. Um, we, we haven't located that. We, we studied a mix of units, but which one is which has not been determined.
Okay, so and then I'd like to hear what the rest of the board says because we want to give you some feedback and direction. I don't know about these big dormers, would they add the mass and scale versus, you know, trying to put in some smaller and fewer but vertical skylights. I'd really like to hear what the rest of the board thinks about these, I mean, they're massive. You know, on both sides here, north and south side of particularly up against the mountain. Um, so I'll I'll let other members comment on that. But that's my mass and scale solution and the mass and the six problems it solves. And again, you're twenty to thirty more affordable housing units in here? Because you got a one, even a one-story underground garage and you lower the height and mass and scale. Um, I think this has real potential with that move that it could be approvable. So other members, uh all two of us, I'll go ahead and chime in.
Well, I'll jump in. So I think as you, as is per usual for us, mass and scales first and foremost in our minds. So going along with that, I, you know, thinking, and I I apologize that this is going to be I could, you know, academic or theoretical or whatever you want to call it. But their first mining context uh historical imagery sheet has three photos, the Lewis Mill, which is a beautiful, you know, often photographed picturesque structure. Um, that particular structure had the luxury of of not very much heavy mining equipment being able to get way up there. And so that structure does sit pretty well in within its site. As you continue down to Idarado and Pandora, I mean, that's a super fun cleanup site, right? I don't know that I'd reference that particular project myself. It's, it's a big rectangular voluminous derelict of a building. Um, and then going further into the re- regional historical imagery, we have, you know, other mining buildings. And I will say those buildings are in no way environmentally sensitive. They're in no way sustainable, they have no respect or gratitude for the the sites they're on. Um, I, as a, as a design architect here in town, certainly we, I, we have used this vocabulary in our designs. I just would like to point out that it's not a sensitive precedent. Um, and then to read from Policy twenty-three, you know, of the buildings that were once found in this area, um, many were associated with the railroad, not mining per se. And what I take from that is they were not four or five-story buildings up the hillside. They were relatively low-level linear structures. Now, I understand that we build a bunch of one-story buildings, we're not going to get much of anything out of the, out of the project. So I don't expect to take it all the way to that logical, that conclusion. But I do think, especially along the walkway, the pedestrian entrance, the buildings do need to step down to to perhaps some of them truly read as a single story, maybe it's a single story sort of awning and then stepping up to a two-story plane that's behind it. But what I see are three and four-story structures right on that pedestrian walkway. I do appreciate that the highest building, the tallest building is up against the hillside where it should be, Mark, as you pointed out. Um, and the low ones are down near the river, but I I don't feel like there's as much sensitivity to that pedestrian access as there could be. Um, anyway, that's
How do you feel about those big dormers?
Well, look, with with buildings of this size, you have, you have two choices. You're going to end up with a large roof or a whole bunch of little cut-up ones, which are, which end up being busier and more visually um in- intrusive. As a, as a theme, I, you know, I kind of don't mind these mining buildings for that, you know, as con- as as reference for that reason. And they've certainly hewed very closely to that, but I wouldn't, I ki- I mean, I'd kind of like to see a bit more differentiation, a bit more variety. Um, and not everything has to be a mill.
But you'd rather see the big dormers than skylights on both the north and south?
Yeah, I don't, you know, skylights are sky, skylights sort of function, and I imagine skylights will show up with, show up here down the road, right? But I think keeping those, the the light, where the light's coming from down in those low sheds is preferable to a whole bunch of perforations in the roof.
Or maybe they could be
Especially, you know, especially, well, I don't know. As you know, I can argue myself in circles. For six months of the year, those skylights aren't going to get any nat- any natural sunlight, it's all going to be reflected in light anyway. But um I'm looking here at all this imagery, I don't see a single skylight anywhere to be found. Um, skylights weren't, if if they're going to really stick to that vocabulary, I don't see skylights as having much of a foothold.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah. Okay, um
And I do, look, and on the next, I mean, I will say on the next page where someone's riding a bicycle across the bridge, this is page, I don't know, one hundred and forty-one of the packets, the three D views, there is a building that steps down to a two-story form, but right in front of the bicycle is that's riding across the bu- bridges. It almost looks like it's a four-story structure, right, you know, right there at the corner.
North side.
Yep, well, on the southeast side, right? Anyway. I, there needs to be better stepping down to that pedestrian zone.
Okay.
And by the way, Mark, I'm a hundred percent on board with get as much of this below grade as we can.
Yeah.
It, I know it costs more. But it's better for the community, it's better for the use, it's better for the project, it's better for, it's just better.
Are are those two-story above-ground parking garages on I? How many stories are those?
Just on the main level? Or two?
There's two parking levels right here.
They're bunkered into the
Okay, those are the, hang on, there's two I's then.
Okay, so up against, up against the hill, it's two stories. And one's part, the one on the east is partially buried. But then on down below I, um, in the middle, those are, are those also two stories of parking above grade?
Uh, just one, just one.
One story above grade, okay, thank you. Above grade.
Yeah, and so in here in the middle, it'll only be five feet, as I was saying, above grade.
Andrew.
Well, going after you guys, there's not as much left as far as uh mass and scale. But I do agree with everything that these guys said, wholeheartedly. Um, I I'm curious, so when I'm looking at the renderings and you have all the locations identified with letters or those like first two I and M? Yep, correct, that you identified as parking areas. How many structures are actually there? Because when I look at the renderings, it looks like there's anywhere from like four on the south end and then four on the north end. So that's eight, right? From B and A and Matt?
So there's going to be, the way we've, there's one building, two building, three building. These two are connected subsurface parking, so that's all about one building. Same with this guy, since it's connected subsurface parking, they're going to count that as one building. And this is the last building, so we'll have six total buildings.
Okay.
Six total, okay. So I know one thing that we encourage in this area especially is to have these, if you're going to do something this large, be able to have it broken up. And it kind of looks like from some of these that they are broken up. Uh, but if the parking was subterranean, you still achieve that on all on one level. But then when it comes up to ground level, they're broken up, which also enhances the pedestrian uh experience.
To Andrew's point, those two south buildings are longer than fifty feet is, which is the maximum in the guidelines, right? Up against the hill, are those, wha- what's the length of those buildings contemplated? I realize this is conceptual.
Yeah, yeah.
Wha- wha- what's the length of those buildings is contemplated?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I, it's not less than fifty.
I know. So, well, I mean, that's the guidelines, so you you got to follow, I mean, somehow we got to follow the guidelines here.
Um, yeah, and tho- those buildings um up against the hillside definitely are the ones that we need. We, we recognize that the design team need the most development with how they're articulated. Um, because they're the, they're the most um pure and form and and need more of that human scale. We agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and just to cite this for number twenty-three, policy mass and scale. A larger building may be divided into modules that reflect the traditional scale of construction. Uh, I think there's a lot of easy ways to do that. And then what you guys have thought some of these roofs that are right above the restaurant commercial areas, like in this rendering, they're not numbered them.
Oh.
I mean, it's, yes, looks like a snow collection site.
Yeah, I don't know what happens to that snow there. Yes. Because it's north facing.
Well, we'll get there.
Yeah, that's a deep, we got to stick to Madison.
One thing from a functionality standpoint, do you have anywhere that's just a like a pull-in and drop-off and leave area? So someone can pull in versus having to go all the way to the garage and then not congest traffic trying to come in and out?
Uh, there's two, there's two turnaround areas that are required for the uh parking depart- uh fire department, excuse me. We've got one, one turnaround that's in this zone here. And we've got a second one that's there.
That's for, that's for fire, not
For for fire, sorry, yeah, I was just talking about pedestrian traffic that's getting dropped off, like parents dropping their children off to ski.
I think we'll talk about that in the next item.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in the next, there is, that is included in the next one.
Perfect.
Um, how many square feet is in that middle parking garage? That's one story, how many square feet is that? Um, there are two separate buildings there. Well, it appears to be some green space in between, but how many square feet is that total?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Well, I mean, somebody knows, Lance, you know.
It's going to be approximately twenty thousand square feet.
Roughly, okay. And that's like ten each of those two buildings, yeah?
Yeah, maybe a little bit bigger when they're connected.
Plus or minus, okay, that that's close enough for now, again. Um, well, that's, that's thirty more affordable housing units right there. You know, if you pu- go parking underground and and still have this height, I mean, it's thirty extra units. So, okay. Well, but, you know, it's an exciting project and these renderings, when you show the open space that's here, again, underground parking can help even contribute more open space and or if not get more units in here. Um, I think it's come a long ways to uh, meeting the open space and, you know, some opening up some view corridors from where it first was several months ago. So you, I mean, you'd be complimented about that. But unless it's any other comments, I'm just going to summarize the four takeaways because I hate it when
Oh, go ahead. One more thing, I I do think, look, all the views you provided are great. The bird's eye views are ne- are necessary, they're informative. I would like to see some more eye level views from the River Park Trail itself. Um, more of what people would, you know, actual experiential type views.
Hey, I I think a three D model that we could spin around would help.
Well, no, I don't want to go down that, that opens up, it's really impossible to document that going forward, right? In it, if there were to be any sort of call-up or documentation, the the live three, three D orbiting is a problem, it's problematic, I don't
We do it all.
This helped us out with some of the other projects.
We do it all the time and then things get called up and it's problematic. Yes.
I can explain why it's difficult is because for retention purposes. Um, all of our records in the clerk's office have to be saved in PDF format. And you can't turn a three D rendering into a PDF format. We've tried um different ways to do that, but it's not really possible, so. In the past, when people have shown three D renderings, we make the app like can't. Take like screenshots of every single angle that they show in the meeting and then we save those as PDF images. For the record, so that's it.
Yeah, I, I'm not asking for as much as where you were gonna go, I just. I'd like some views that are gonna be consistent. We're gonna see this a number of times. I'd like to be able to compare. The first one to the second one to the third one to the fourth one, and I would like to see some more eye level. St- street level views. That's all I was saying.
Okay.
Thank you for calling that.
Level views.
Well, I brought that, they asked me to help out with something and I'm like, I, there's, you can't. Unless you attach a video to, I mean, you can't do it.
Okay, so the, the walk away is our recommendation would be that. Please don't go try for a P U D of fifty to fifty-five feet. I mean, we won't even have to adjudicate that. There's nothing in. Our guidelines to allow such a thing. And. Number two, um underground pipe parking, you know, at least one story on each. I realize half of the, one in the south is pretty much underground, it sounds like, because you've added dirt and fill, which is pretty clever. Usage, but I'm just thinking about the overall height. Again, maybe, maybe it was two stories and one's partially buried, and then you can take off and you can be forty-five foot high. Uh, which is the maximum in the land use code, forty to forty-five feet. Step down. The. Structures, almost all of them, and to the edges and to the pedestrian areas. That's a, a very strong guideline. Uh, less than fifty-foot long modules, we, we cannot prove, approve longer than fifty-foot modules. So there's no use holding back here with, you know, giving you feedback. And uh, some more street level. Photos, elevations. And um, but I hope that if you really want to solve these six problems that, you know, have, have come up. Underground parking, parking can pretty well take care of those and uh, including twenty to thirty additional, I repeat. Units where the uh, one-story parking garage is now that's completely above ground. So, uh, that's our feedback in a short list.
Can I read one paragraph?
Yes, please.
This is from the introduction. The town wishes to ensure that the neighborhood appears to be visually and functionally related to the older core. As seen from a distance, the accommodations treatment area should appear be part of the community with essentially the same perceived street and alley arrangements. Building forms, development, scale. Sorry, I shouldn't have paused there. Essentially the same perceived street and alley arrangements, building forms and scale.
Yeah.
Well, this is particularly important for projects on large parcel, parcels. Ding ding ding.
Okay, uh, well, let's hear from the public. Um, it's a work session. We ask for your comments to be. Less than three minutes, we can go live in the room to start if you want, and or if you'd raise your hand electronically. Um, three minutes each, we appreciate your input. Kristen, go ahead.
Hi, Kristen Permakoff. Thanks for having me up here. Thanks for all this. Am I good on the mic? I'm learning, I'm getting better at the mic, working on it. All right, so I have a few things, I have a few things for the next part of the presentation afterwards, so I'll come back. Uh, I appreciate the idea and the need for more local housing. However, I would like to see a more linear plan. And the required infrastructure that would be needed for this whole lift seven area, which was. Created because the SWAT plan was created, which was passed during COVID. So I paid attention to that. There was not a lot of public comment on that or public feedback on that plan. Diagrams in that plan are not to scale, their ideas, their concepts, it's not a Bible, it's not. We have to follow these rules like this. A comprehensive parking plan, I think, would be important also. If you talk about adding more housing units on this space, I think it's already too many. Because then if you have two hundred and fifty units there, that's about five hundred cars, because each unit is gonna have. Maybe two breadwinners and then they might have two cars. So then half of those cars are gonna have to go on Lot L or somewhere else. So if you add more units here, you're gonna need to add more parking for more cars. Um, I mean, I thought we wanted less cars in town, not more cars in town. The pop-up meeting that we had at lift seven earlier this summer was only attended by about thirty people. You know, and so everyone says, oh, it was great and the feedback was great, but all the public comments you have in the packet are against this project. And against the size and the mass and the scale of this project. If you look at the footprints of these buildings compared to the Shandoka buildings. On the bigger plan, on the bigger bird's eye view plan, they're massive. They're way too big, way too big. Um, where else am I? Um, way too big, bird's eye view. Yeah, I mean, another work session should come after maybe another town council broader work session. I mean, I don't know if anyone else in this room is here for public comment for this issue, but I know there's a lot of people online listening. And it shouldn't be just the stakeholders of the West End get invited to these meetings. It should be the entire town. Because everyone in town is gonna be paying for this, everyone, not just the stakeholders that live in the West End like me. And I don't know if you guys have been down to the West End, to Pack Street, I mean, the Pack Street. The trees that were cut down, they're gonna plant new baby trees. It's a sidewalk that's meant for bikes. They took money out of the bridge fund to make the sidewalk. Like the money thing, I think, needs to be kind of straightened out before we're spending a lot more money on this. How much has, have these consultants cost already? You know, I have a lot of questions. Yeah, again, I think, I think we should pause it and send it to the bigger, you know, the whole town. And maybe look at a townwide vote before we're all wasting our time about, oh yeah, this roof line is gonna slide snow into the people's heads that are walking underneath it. Or whatever else, you know, and underground parking garages, they're terrifying. I walked through the Silver Jack parking structure on Saturday night of Blues and Brews. Just to check it out, there's sixty spaces, several handicap spaces. There were like six cars parked underground there, no one else. It was totally empty, empty on the Saturday of Blues and Brews, which historically has been a really busy weekend in town. But to have a large, large underground parking structure, who's gonna monitor it? Who's gonna watch it? I appreciate sinking it down to get more spaces, you know, for the views and everything and the mass and scale, but. I mean, think about an underground big parking structure. It, as a woman, it's scary to walk around down there, so, by yourself. So those are my comments for now. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, online, we have some people raising their hands. Madeline White, if you'd um unmute. And love to hear from you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to um say that I agree with everything that Kristen just said. And I also wanted to point out that the. What you were talking about on the plan um for thirty-four, thirty-four B um for uh open space. Um, when those buildings get built, those are gonna be little tiny patches of green. There's not gonna be as much as anyone thinks there's gonna be, and if, they're also gonna be in the shade of. These massive buildings. Um, so anyway, I just agree with everything that, that Kristen had said about the project. It is way too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kelly Bunch, if you'd unmute yourself, please.
Yes, hi, this is Kelly Bunch, um, and my husband Josh is here as well. Um, just wanted to also add our support for the last two comments that were made, both Madeline and the, the woman before. Um, we have concerns about um certainly the, the heights of the building. Um, just how congested this area will be. Um, and then in addition, just looking at these projects as a whole. Um, which I know we're talking about some of this a little bit later, so um, we can always circle back, but. Um, you know, just using this space in a different way so that we're not looking at. Um, you know, parking on the other side and, you know, hotels in the middle of green space, that sort of thing. Um, just, just more concerns as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ryan Witt, if you'd unmute, please.
I, uh, yeah, I would agree with everybody else's comments. Uh, the, the project as it's presented is far too massive for Telluride. Uh, we already have issues with congestion on Davidson, Colorado. I mean, yeah, like we're looking at. Does anybody know how many additional cars we're looking at here? I mean, five hundred has been thrown out just on Carhenge with this development. An additional nine hundred car parking garage on Shandoka. An additional thirty-eight to forty, maybe hotel room condominiums on the only open space in the West End. And this is, this will change Telluride forever. It won't be Telluride anymore. It's gonna be resembling Park City, Whistler. I mean, if that's what Telluride wants. This is the right direction. We really gotta scale everything back. And revisit how to make this work, because there's a great opportunity here. There's some great parcels of land, if done right. This could be a great amenity for Telluride, but the direction this is going is, is completely the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to raise their hand and make a comment? One once. One twice. Well, thanks everybody for the input and hopefully the takeaways will be taken to heart. Um, that, that Hark gave you as well as community input, but thank you. Okay, our last work session is uh adjacent to this, the lift seven base area consideration application for work session. A proposed new construction to lift seven neighborhood, Telluride and Golf property pursuant to the land use code five two O one C. Um, it's tracked why Dakota annexation according to the platte recorded March tenth. Uh, nineteen eighty-one in platte book one of H three twenty-seven and the rest of this legal description as shown. Its address is lift seven base area, open space zone district and the owner, Telluride Ski and Golf, uh applicant. Design workshop, staff member Kristen Clouder.
Thank you so much, Mark. Um, so Mark just went over the details.
Bob is returned. Bob Mather is returned. Okay, thanks.
Sure, so Mark just went over the details of this project, which are shown here. Terms of land use, it's a nine point eight, three acre parcel, includes an informal gravel parking area currently, access drives wetland areas. A chairlift and associated structures and undeveloped open areas. Um, the zone district is zoned open space, portion of the parcel is located in Rockfall Hazard Zone B, et cetera. And um, it's in the accommodations treatment area. That's just the, the background. This is where the parcel is located. Um, I'm gonna let Hark know that some of what I will say now is going to be familiar to you. Because we're having two consecutive work sessions and I think it's really important for the public and for the record. To include that information in case people are joining now and weren't part of the prior work session, so. Hang with me while I go through the overview. I'll go as speedily as I can. Um, so this Hark work session is an opportunity for the applicant to have a preliminary informal conversation with Hark. The proposed project on the lift seven base area site is in the preliminary conceptual design phase. The applicant is seeking guidance from Hark prior to taking any next steps towards preparing a formal Hark application. The project background and context for, for this parcel is in January twenty twenty-five. The town of Telluride and Telluride Ski and Golf signed a memo of understanding outlining the collaborative efforts associated with the planning and development. Of the lift seven base area, Carhenge and Lot L properties. As the applicant notes, the aim of the lift seven neighborhood project is to create an integrated mix of residential, community, commercial, transit and hospitality uses. To support a vibrant year-round community. Um, terms of land use code compliance, a formal land use code compliance review will take place following the submission of a complete Hark application. Prior to this work session, staff did review land use code requirements with the applicant to ensure the applicant is taking. These requirements and constraints into account at this preliminary conceptual stage of project design. Concurrent with a Hark application, the applicant anticipates submitting an application to rezone the parcel per land use code section six five O one. Um, in terms of the design guidelines, the four overall precepts, as you know. Keep it simple, keep it in scale, respect the historic resources and make all new design compatible to the existing context. And for this first work session on the proposed project, while it is still in its preliminary conceptual phase. The aim is to focus on the design guidelines that are particularly pertinent at this early stage of project design with a primary emphasis on mass and scale. Um, so again, for this parcel, although the zone district for this project is currently open space. The parcel is located within the accommodations treatment area within the, the design guidelines. This work session is exclusively focused on design guidelines that would be relevant to a project, should the rezoning be approved. Should concurrent applications be submitted by the applicant to Hark it in P N Z. Um, and so uh, we are, we are just having a preliminary conceptual design discussion during this work session. And these details would be in the future. Key town of Telluride design guidelines for work session discussion. So again, I'll just give you the visual for, for what the applicant included in their packet for this meeting, just to, to sort of. Put us in context, but I am going to leave the project up to the applicant again to share and to go into detail with. And um, to have that conversation with you during this work session. Um, but here's, here's generally what's proposed at this point in time preliminarily. Um, again, uh, some of these are different than what I went over in the prior work session, but bear with me. I'm just gonna go quickly through them to, to bring the public into uh the loop with the design guidelines. Um, in the accommodations treatment area, a mix of uses is allowed. Projects may include both residential and commercial uses. Even though a general visual continuity with the older parts of town is desired, this may be balanced with natural constraints and some variety in building character. Whenever feasible, established characteristics of site orientation and street layout found in the historic residential areas of Telluride. Should also be expressed in this treatment area, and this is particularly important for projects on large parcels. That may have a substantial impact on the area and therefore special care should be taken when designing a project to ensure that it is visually integrated. At mass scale and character with the neighborhood and the town. As seen from a distance, the project should appear to be a part of the community with essentially the same perceived, perceived street and alley arrangements, building forms and scale of development. This is particularly important for projects on large parcels and that spans several parcels. Um, more variety in architectural design is appropriate than in other areas, but should maintain the visual continuity with the historical district. Um, this project um is located within the River Park Hillside area edge south of the river. Which has steep slopes that require different technical responses. Uh, planned projects to pre-reserve and reinforce existing view corridors and to establish new view opportunities. And the project should enhance the river edge as a public amenity. Um, that's just for the broader accommodations treatment area, and then of course, Hark focuses on mass and scale during these work sessions. I included in the memo, the staff memo, that um everyone, public has access to. A number of design guidelines that uh might be relevant to this discussion this evening. I'm not gonna go over them in as much detail as I did in the prior work session, but just to highlight a few here, and then you can refer to the. Staff memo, building sizes that will appear to be similar in scale to those found historically in town. Um, and heights of buildings should vary but may increase closer to the mountains. Primary building facades should not exceed fifty feet in width without a significant setback. Um, you know, that differentiation set pa- in setback in the wall plane. Creation of positive open space in these setbacks such that they will enhance the streets, the streetscape. Um, facade widths should reflect traditional lot widths and lots of discussion in the mass and scale section of the design guidelines on. Variations in facade treatments um throughout the structures, including the roof lines, front and rear facades. So that it looks like a collection of smaller buildings, and I think we will discuss that for this project. Building heights on larger projects should be a variety, including some one and two-story elements at the sidewalk and alley edges. Uh, new construction should appear similar in mass and scale to historic structures. Um, you know, large lots, several buildings rather than a single structure to help reduce the perceived scale of the project. Positive open space again and that emphasis, um, more supporting uh guidelines to that effect. Um, breaking things into modules, et cetera, and lots of emphasis on stepping down at pedestrian scale. And bringing things into that pedestrian scale with the positive open space and stepping down buildings. Um, I think the context compatibility is, is important as one of the design guidelines for, to be considered in this work session. The new interpretations of traditional building types are encouraged, such that they are seen as products of their own time, yet compatible with historic resources in the vicinity. So that historic proportions of height, width and depth, these are very important within this treatment area to be compatible. compatible with historic mass and scale of Telluride. And then the relationship to the town grid. Um, so, uh, finally, these are the last couple, building form. Forms similar to those found historically, breaking up larger buildings, articulation of wall planes, and architectural character, new interpretations of traditional building styles are encouraged. Um, again, more detail in your packet. Uh, the requested action this evening is Hark is requested to provide general feedback on the information and options presented by the applicant in this preliminary conceptual design phase. Hark's review at a work session is not intended to vest the applicant or public with any reliance as to the outcome of the formal development review process per land use code section 5201C5. And I'm going to stop there and tag in the applicant. Thank you for bearing with me. I know these are two back-to-back work sessions. And, um, yes, so applicant, back to you for us.
Thank you, Kristen. Good evening, all. My name is Faras, landscape architect with Design Workshop, and I'm joined today by Justin Helmbrink with Olson-Kundig Architects. Thank you for sticking around, and we look forward to your feedback. Uh, the development program for tract Y is 38 keys, mix of units and sizes, plus or minus 8,500 square feet of ground floor commercial, and the parking needed to park the development for the land use code. And looking at the site plan for tract Y, the plan aims to reinforce the lift and create a meaningful connection to the ski resort for Telluride locals and visitors. The orientation of the buildings was informed by view analysis of adjacent units and the town grid. Pedestrian paths and the outdoor seating areas further emphasize the grid and create seamless connectivity to the planned design of the Carhenge site. At the ground floor, cut through main building creates a visual and pedestrian connection through the building into the lift base area with the ground floor spillout areas activating the public realm. The buildings are also set on the site based on the location of existing natural features and lift setback requirements. As you approach, the main access way to the Lift 7 base area is through top, through the Carhenge site across Tomboy Bridge. We are proposing a autocourt turnaround and drop-off area where letter H is located. And then, as you can see, these two lines in here are the poke through the building that connect both sides, east and west, uh, through the structure on the ground floor. We're also exploring spillout areas, informal gathering areas, and fire pit seating areas as part of this activation at the base. And we've also, where I'm showing letter E, are incorporating a large area of open, uh, open unplanned undeveloped area for the existing uses that are, uh, currently being utilized today. I'm going to now pass it over to Justin, and Justin, you're going to walk him through the architecture.
Sounds good. Thank you, Faras. Thank you to the board for meeting with us today and working through the development of this project with us. Next slide for us. But I won't spend too much time here because, uh, you just went through this with my colleague, Erica, but these are precedent images of mining context in the region, which we heard from listening sessions that, um, this is positively received, uh, as opposed to mountain modern or even Victorian, um, architecture of the area. And this is a view from east looking west. You're looking at the arrival to this lodging component building. Um, at the, the wetlands that are in the foreground and, um, then the drop-off area that Ross just mentioned. Um, one key component to this drop-off area, as Ross has mentioned, is this portal or connector through the building. We're hoping that this building can stitch, um, the east side and, uh, the pedestrian, um, flow and allow an opening and aperture to the lift area and the open space beyond. And likewise, going from west to east, stitching back to, um, the community as well. You'll also see on the lower level of this building to the left and to the right, um, there are two sort of saddlebags at the ground level. These are, uh, perhaps lobby amenity and also, um, commercial amenity, maybe restaurant or bar, something like that, that could be activated at the ground level, um, and really kind of energize the plaza areas that are around this building. And to become an amenity to the activities that are already happening and convening at the lift. Um, the idea would be at these ground floors, it's a little hard to see in this view, but those, those ground levels are actually protruding out at you in a single story and become roof deck terraces for the units above. Um, so we're trying to break down the articulation at the ground floor to single story and then set back to the taller volumes of the lodging component building as well. Um, there might be some conversation about the, uh, the dormer that you see in that, but perhaps it's too aggressive. I'd love to get your feedback on that based on dormer conversations that you had before, but they do allow great opportunities, um, from inside, from units inside the building to have great mountain, mountain views from that building while also not blocking views from the residences to the west of those same mountains as well. Go ahead, Frost, to the next. Uh, this is a view at the west side of the building. Again, you see the, the open space, gathering space, uh, around the lift. You see the portal connecting to the housing. Uh, to the left on the ground floor is, um, could be that commercial restaurant bar area with a covered porch activating an urban plaza that Frost was talking about. And then the individual one-story building to the left could also be a commercial, uh, component for ski retail, um, or something like that that could be imagined in the future. Um, materials are similar to the Carhenge site that we just saw. So, um, vertical wood siding, perhaps corrugated metal roof and, um, and accent panels as well. And, um, that's really what I've got. For us, I know a lot of this architecture is familiar to what we just saw on the other work session. So I would love to field any questions.
I have one. Just, could you go to the, um, the big site plan? Yeah. Um, you showed the drop off. Where do you enter for the parking?
You enter right here. And this goes underground. This is buried one level below, below grade.
All the parking's below grade?
Yep, parking is fully below grade on this, on this project.
What's the, do you know the overall width of that building? That you were just, that he was just talking to, building F? You're looking at it from north to south?
Um, let's see if we can, let me see if I can pull that up really quick for you.
You're talking this direction?
Yeah, north, south, the longer direction, correct?
Yep.
I don't have that right at my fingertips.
That's fine. Well, you scale 60, that looks like close to 120.
Yeah, and we're, we're trying to break it up at, at the ground level, went to two saddlebags at us, uh, as I mentioned, that are under the, um, that 50-foot articulation, really so that at the ground floor, you read these as two separate buildings, almost the way you're interacting with the ground plane.
What is the purpose of the building that's not labeled with a letter?
This one? It's a ski, ski shop. Cafe brew.
How many affordable housing units or ADUs are in the hotel? That the skier is providing?
I don't know if we know the answer to that currently.
They're discounting on the town's affordable housing? Okay, nevermind. The answer is probably none.
Unknown at this, uh, unknown at this point.
38 keys and they're all rentals. Okay. The dormer, and I'd like to get some of the architects on the board feedback. I, I think it's possibly have a dormer here, but I think it's about twice the size of something that we could approve as far as kind of the size and scale of it, but I'd love to get other feedback. I think it's just.
And the amount of glass.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah.
Yeah. Too tall, too tall or too wide or both?
But it strains the definition of a dormer.
Yeah, it's more roof, roof projection.
It's more, it's more like a, yeah, it's just its own roof.
Yeah. Correct. It's kind of a layering, layered roof effect again to create some articulation to the roof, the roof profile. Um, I'd love to know what you think, if that's successful in its articulation issue. It's, you know, fair comment, if it should be reduced in scale.
Well, I think it probably needs a ridge and needs to slope more parallel on the east side with the, with the roof that slopes towards us. I mean, I'm sympathetic to it's doing the function of it. The interior space would would, would benefit from that, but I, it's pretty, you know, pretty in-your-face projection from the exterior.
Is that, is the space below that open all the way down to the?
No, no, that's an, no, that's an additional floor up there that could become additional units.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the idea of having that link going through the building in the middle. I like that. I think that's.
Yeah. And, and the roof accent kind of highlights that, right? It's the, it's this middle portion of the building, this kind of.
Yeah, I think, I think you could do that without it being so big. Um, I think there's, it's all the guidelines that, uh, conditions that, um, Kristen pointed out, and good job, by the way. Um, that the building does need to have some more articulation to it. Um, it still reads as one big mass. I mean, if we had floor plans, you know, large floor plan sections, that sort of thing would be very helpful on the next go-around to understand how the building is shaped. Um, and I would also request, uh, that you, um, provide some kind of, uh, lack of a better term, a site section that shows the relationship of the other buildings and the mountain and the river to the building, how it relates in terms of scale of all those elements would be very, very helpful in the next go-around when we're looking more at the detail of this. And, um,
I just checked my notes here.
Yeah, just to kind of articulate, just to verbalize the scale of that form. There's three floors below it, like the breezeway is a, is a level. There's two levels above that, and then that's at least as tall as the two levels below it. So that's a level four and five. It's dormer.
And, and it is kind of the extension of the same roof slope on the backside. So that's driving it a little bit. So there are ways we can lessen that for sure.
Yeah, maybe half the width and half the height. We could, we could look at it. Well, how does the board feel about three-story wall plane unbroken except for balconies? Is there some step back we should see?
I did, I said that this, it needs to be broken up. The facade needs to have some more articulation. More articulation to the facades.
Okay.
And did I, I wonder if I described this well enough. This bottom zone is probably 12 to 15 feet in front of the wood siding. Um, and then we have this, this upper kind of bridging moment. Let's call that the two, two stories. Now, that is all in one plane, but with balcony, but with balconies. Um, are you saying that upper, that upper floor needs to be broken up, uh, in some step backs?
Yes. Give them a bigger deck.
And on a number of, on other projects, the third level, we've always asked that that be set back, uh, from the second level.
I see. So at this, at this, this line here.
Yeah. So, well, yeah, that line. So they can, stepping it back gives them a bigger deck, but you know, provides a break in the wall plane. But, you know, other than that, I mean, these like three things. I mean, this could get talked to being approved. I mean, if they, yeah, it'd look a lot different, but it, it's not very complicated to change.
Right. What, what's the roof pitch of the main roof? Um, it may be packaged.
No.
I think it's a, it's, it's a, it's a 512 or something like that.
Any other comments?
Roof deck.
Roof deck.
Roof, roof deck on the top?
A Hark retreat room.
Oh, there, there you go. For us, will you go to the slide on the backside?
Glazing they'll deal with. They know it's, there's a lot of glazing that needs.
So, so I'm gonna, yeah, give the two points. That's about all we have.
Yeah, you can, I think you have.
Reduce the dormer and then more articulation of the building. No three-story interrupted wall plane with a setback of the third floor. That's kind of combined in a couple, uh, and maybe a step down at the edges. Um, I don't think there's anything else. And I want to commend you to doing what the private sector usually does, provides 100% underground parking. Thank you very much. So we'll hear from the public.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Permakoff again. Um, so again, the drawings are very nice. Um, but I want to clarify the process because currently tract Y is zoned as open space. And I believe it's zoned open space because of a covenant with the Bachmann Village development in the eighties. It's zoned as open space. So you guys can't rezone that. The town can't rezone that. PNZ has to rezone that. So I believe before you can do drawings of this space, that parcel probably, I don't think I'm too close now. I mean, clarify the process. Yes, not head nod. Yes. Okay, the process is correct. And the applicant is not the town, Kristen's presenting, the architects are describing, but the applicant is the, the landscape architect and the, and the other guy. I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I forgot your names. Um, so yeah, that, I think that's the biggest piece I have, um, about this, that you're spending a lot of time and money to design this when the parcel is still zoned as open space. Sorry, I think I got lip gloss on the mic. So there's that. And I know a lot of people have made public comment, and I know a lot of the neighbors were kind of banking on that covenant to run for a while. And that's why they bought their properties down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did the hand raise? Yeah, it's Ryan Witt. Unmute yourself and then we'll go with Cammy Nichols and Kelly Bunch.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I, I agree, uh, with what Christian was saying. Um, I believe also every HOA bordering the open space has publicly came out against rezoning the open space. Uh, so that's something to consider. Um, also, I don't know if we can go to the, the drawing. I mean, I don't know if you can do this while I'm talking, but there's one of the, the renderings that has the lift, uh, house in it. It doesn't look like there's a way to ski, if you're an intermediate, to ski from Telluride Trail to the new lift house because of the location of the hotel. So I believe that that would be an issue. I don't know if the plan is to just have the skiers take off their skis when they get to the bottom of Telluride Trail and then walk over, because it really isn't like even the lift queues weren't designed as like a skier. They're more designed as like you're standing up and kind of like, you know, going through a maze, like you're waiting for like a roller coaster as opposed to skiing up to a, um, a ski lift. So I think this, this current rendering of this hotel is really more designed as if there was no ski in, ski out access. And it's really just a matter of how can we get something that looks like it could fit on this space? And if we can get the rezone approved, then we can figure out how to do it rather than thinking like, okay, well, we actually, in order for this to. Then we can figure out how to do it rather than thinking like, okay, well, we actually, in order for this to make sense, it's gotta be a ski in ski out. Another thing is where, like, where is the trash located? You know, cause all the renderings that we see have bicycles and pedestrians, but it doesn't show. Food access, it doesn't show service access. You got cleaning crews, you got garbage trucks, you got. Package deliveries, you got hotel guests getting dropped off, getting picked up. There's none of that in the drawing. It doesn't show where any of that's happening. And this is also supposed to be the main corridor between connecting car hinge to track Y. And there's also a bridge that's going over this wetland and the wetland's main source is, is right at the bottom of Telluride Trails and O'Reilly's. So you're either gonna have to put, build a retaining wall there and cut off the wetland or the wetland's gonna be cut off by the bridge. There's a lot of environmental issues that are gonna have to be addressed before you can consider a rezone or any of these other things that we're talking about today. Thanks.
Thank you. Good points. And, and this is an informal work session. Uh, Kristen, uh, Permakoff had a follow up comment on.
Just along the skier, yeah, that skier, um, discussion, you know, if you do have, making, looking at this as comprehensive, including. Lot L parking structure and all this, there's gotta be a way to get all those people from Lot L. To the lift and that really hasn't been discussed at all. Maybe it's gonna be worked on. In the lot L, the next lot L work session, but right now it just goes through the road that, you know, that you enter. Um, into Cimarron. It's just, it's a tiny sidewalk and then it's just a road. That the ski patrol uses for access. So pedestrian access from that way too, I think would be important. Thanks.
Okay, Cammy Nichols.
Yes, hi, Cammy Nichols, three hundred Mahoney, um, and also here on behalf of the Chair Seven Community Coalition and thank you for. Reviewing our comments submitted and it was a general comment meant for town council, but felt it was also applicable for. For this review, it just, it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse here when. You know, there's been no putt application made yet, but, um, I appreciate the feedback that. You hope a putt application isn't made for heights up to fifty to fifty-five feet. Um, as standard heights under the land use code now should be thirty to thirty-five and. Maybe up to forty to forty-five and that seems like a, an extraordinary increase and not to mention the fact that. If there is a putt application and the, um, part of it is to rezone this open space to accommodations too with. Uh, whatever that height restriction becomes. You know, there's no guarantee that this hypothetical design we're looking at now is what some future ski owner area. I mean, ski area owner is, um, going to actually propose to build there. I. You know, we've asked the question of what guarantee do we have that the designs we're looking at? Are what would actually be built and, and heard the answer that it's basically dictated by geography, which. Sort of says there is no guarantee to me. Um, and right now it's, it's about ten acres of the last. Truly free and wild open space, um, in Telluride and, and it would be a shame. Um, most of the members of the community that we've surveyed, uh, in our, in our two hundred membership plus think it's. Uh, it should stay open space and that in these community stakeholder meetings. That hasn't really been an option. You know, I appreciate that the architects are giving us. Um, they, they have a job to do and they've been told to design a building. And so keep it open space isn't really one of the multiple choice questions that we've been given, but that's what most people have been saying they would like to see. That's most in character with Telluride, uh, with the historic nature of Telluride. I think the whole town should be engaged in this. Um, and you talk about a public amenity being one of the goals of, of, um, design review. Well, you know, I think open space right now is. The way it is is an invaluable public amenity. So I just wanted to reiterate those concerns that we. We've shared with y'all in, in writing and appreciate your time and I know it's late and thank you all for, for sticking this out.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to anybody that's speaking, uh, your comments need to be germane to the heart purview. Unfortunately, we're not the body that deals with other issues. So please, um, yeah, we welcome your comments on the design guidelines and related issues. Uh, let's see, who's next? Uh, did, that was Kelly? Kelly, Kelly Bunch.
Hello again. Um, thank you for that review. Um, just wanted to. Um, echo all of the comments that you have just recently heard. Um, we also have concerns about this. Um, in addition to being opposed to the project, but we are, uh, we understand that's not the point of tonight. Um, i- in terms of the design. Um, you know, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, the, the guests of this hotel would have great views of the mountain. And that wouldn't block the views of the residents. Um, well, I'm not so sure I believe that. Um, you know, I'd love to see some mockups of what it would look like standing in some of these places that, you know, we've always had this open space. Um, I, I also am concerned just about congestion in general, which I know has been stated, um, by some others, but you know, when you are. Standing in this space, um. It does, it certainly doesn't feel like there is room for a hotel and parking and, um. Communal spaces and fire pits and all of these things that we're talking about. Um, it feels very, um. Kind of smashed together in a very small space and that in addition to all of the ski traffic coming in. Um, it, it just feels like the design does not fit the needs of the space.
If I can just add one thing, my name is Josh Bunch. I'm Kelly's husband. Um, you know, I think the comment was made earlier about, you know. We all like Telluride because it's Telluride. We don't, you know, have an interest in turning this into Park City. I think that, you know, some of this certainly has a feel of a bigger resort. And I think, uh, you know, when you're looking at mass and scale, you are really making a huge change and impact on a relatively small area. That is Telluride. It's open. You're staring at Aspen trees and a ski mountain.
Hey, thank you. Michael Safler. Go ahead and unmute.
Oh, thanks. Yes. Um, hi, Michael Safler. I'm a, uh, fifty plus year resident of town. Um, it, uh, it does seem to me as if, uh, as if this project is, um. Uh, is just plunked in the middle, um, of a piece of property. Um, that is, um, currently zoned, um, as open space and was zoned that way because it's a sensitive. Uh, ecological, uh, feature of the property. Um, there are, uh, there are wetlands. Um, and, um, and in fact, the, uh, the driveway, if not the building itself, um, come right through the, uh, the wetlands. And the, uh, uh, putting up a, uh. A structure of this size, um, right in the middle of a sensitive area doesn't make any sense and is not compatible. Um, with the, uh, the intention of the, uh, the reason why, uh, the property was zoned as open space in the first place. Um, and I, and I'm not sure I understand, um, why you skipped over. Uh, the, uh, the fact that there is not going to be any employee housing. It sure does seem like. Um, employee housing is a, uh, is a vital, um, factor that's taken into consideration with any application that's made for any building. Um, in the town and, um, and at the very least, um, should be addressed here. Um, but I'm still not sure, um, that this is a hotel. It doesn't seem to be a hotel, even though it's been talked about as a hotel. Um, it does, uh, the, the language that was used by the architect, um, talked about, um, things like, like, uh, lodging and. Um, and, uh, and, uh, it seems to me like this is a condominium project. Um, and, um, and, and I'm not sure that the town needs another condominium project. I'm not even sure the town needs another hotel. Um, the, the parking underground, even though, um, it, uh, it does conform with a concept. Um, in this particular area with all that wetlands, um, it's, it's pretty impractical. Um, and it displaces an awful lot of water, uh, that's already been, um, been repeatedly displaced by all the rest of the development. Um, in the area and will only exacerbate, uh, the, uh, the water problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment? If so, please raise your hand out there electronically. Going once. Twice. Piper, I don't see anybody. Okay. So we'll close that out. We've already given you our summary of recommendation, uh, to comply with guidelines and, um. Thank you and good luck and we'll, uh, close with the board and staff discussion. Kristen, real quick.
Actually, there, there are no further updates. I provided those at the beginning of the meeting and the only thing I will say is that we are going to. Um, based on the fact that we only have four here this evening, we are skipping the agenda item for the. Decision making on the preservation awards and we're just gonna move that to the next meeting when we have more Hark members in attendance.
So be here next meeting.
So thank you very much.
Winners are.
Yes.
Um, and I did have one question is the. When, when, is the council decided or, or is there a date for the land use code alleged? Uh, violations at one twenty north ass and we all got a public letter. Is there a date for this hearing? Anybody know? Ally?
So before Hark, they appeal before Hark, um. I'll speak on that later, but there, don't anticipate a date at this time. Um, we will bring it up for you for scheduling when appropriate.
Will that be though a separate meeting or part of our regular meeting?
Um, it, it could be either. Yeah, but we'll, if, if appropriate, we'll talk about scheduling at a future time for that.
All right, thanks. Well, listen, thanks for everybody's input and collaboration and we'll adjourn at nine thirty AM. Now inter time. Thank you.